Please come to order. I realize this is a much larger crowd than this building can pleasantly accommodate, so we'll try and do the best we can, and if we're all courteous and keep our personal conversations down while the meeting's going on, perhaps those that are out in the lobby can hear, and those that are out in the lobby can still watch a little bit on the television. So we'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. You join me to do that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
You have a roll call, please, Bert.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Coppel?
Here.
Mr. Plunge?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Mayor Gatto?
Here. Okay. The purpose of this meeting this evening has multiple parts to it, and I'll try and get a little bit of background, because I know that the majority of the audience here is from Mary Avenue, and that's really, I know to you it's very important, but that is only one part of our overall discussion. I think it's important to keep all of these things in perspective. About, well, Highway 85 Extension has been an ongoing effort for many years, and about two years ago, or three years ago at this point, Measure A was passed, provide funding to make Highway 85 possible. One of the efforts that was necessary for each community was to do a freeway agreement, which would identify movements, intersection configurations, and allow Caltrans to build a freeway through their community. About three months ago, we were proceeding merrily along when we were informed by Caltrans that the movement that is now available from people traveling on 280 wishing, going towards San Francisco, that want to get off at Stevens Creek, that that was going to be physically impossible to do. At that point, we said, whoa, that's an important movement in our community, we need to look at why we can't do that. You guys go back to the drawing board and see if you can't find a solution to that. They have been present, they have been working the last three months to come up with alternatives. The proposal for the Mary Avenue overcrossing, as we'll call it, it's just one of those alternatives. It is by no means an accomplished fact, it has not had any blessing, or it has not had any support at this point from this council. It is just that, is an alternative that is being presented. This evening, we will look at a series of alternatives that deal with that movement, either producing it someplace else, or one of the alternatives would be not to have it at all. Another... Now, the movement I was speaking to was not only the Mary Avenue movement, but the movement that presently exists from 280 on to Stevens Creek. They would have to do that in another fashion, and maybe not even Mary Avenue. Mary Avenue's only one of the alternatives, I want to keep that in perspective. But the council also has to come to grips with the freeway agreement, which is another major part of our being able to pursue Highway 85. So this whole issue has a lot of factors that go with it, and it is a very complicated issue. I can honestly say, from a personal nature at this point, I think it's a very sad state of affairs that we've ended up with a situation that had so much community support that now has elements to it that are dividing the community. So we'll have to find a way to all pull together and produce the correct solution so the whole community benefits. And I hope we can keep that spirit in mind as we move through this this evening. So at this point, I'm going to ask the Public Works Director to give us a little more introduction, and then we'll have Caltrans give us the overall presentation on the movements and the freeway agreement information. Bert?
Thank you. You almost summarized my report, but as you indicated, the main purpose for this meeting is two-fold. One is to review the outstanding issues, which there are two of them, and also then to review some of the options that the city council has as to how to deal with the freeway agreement, the performance agreement. The two remaining issues are, one that you've mentioned, which is the access from 280 on to Stevens Creek, and the future configuration of the interchange at Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road and 85 near Rainbow. Let's first start off with the direct access from 280 on to Stevens Creek Boulevard. Again, as mentioned, there's been a considerable amount of work, as shown on the board, by Caltrans and the authority, to try to review and to analyze as many of the options as possible to try to maintain the existing move from 280 on to Stevens Creek. And they'll go into detail for you as to the problems that they have encountered and why some of these options that are placed on the board do not work. It is very important, after the discussion, and maybe several discussions thereafter, to be assured that there are no possible configurations, no possible alternatives at that particular interchange before we move on to other options. But we must look at all the different options if these particular ones fail. The report then outlines four other options that may occur if we cannot find an alternative at this interchange, and that is no access at all, and review some of the impacts as to diverting traffic on to other parts of the city. Retain the existing configuration, that is, to do nothing in that area between 280 and Stevens Creek, and pretend that it was constructed back in 1970, and deal with some of the impacts associated with that. That has some ramifications that we'll discuss later. Use Mary Avenue, as we'll discuss in greater detail, and if we find that the access is much more important than anything else, then no Route 85 extension is another alternative that must be addressed. If we start off with the no access, and that is that we forego any exit on to Stevens Creek from 280, we have some impacts that we need to review, and that is that this access has been in effect since 1970. Traffic patterns have been established in the town with this access. The city has been reluctant in the past to just transfer a problem from one area of town on to another area of town. Our whole city general plan has been based on a balanced traffic plan, which has had this move and has continued to have this move in the total analysis. So any changes in the overall plan will shift traffic on to other areas and will then unbalance our general plan transportation element. It also changes a direct route, which I think is consistent with trying to attract traffic on to the freeways. This particular one, if you remove it, will transfer traffic from the freeways on to local streets, and that's a conflict with the overall intent of Route 85. The other option is to...
Bert, excuse me before you go, I want to make one thing, clarification to your remarks. When you speak of no access on to Stevens Creek from Route 85, we're only speaking of the move that presently exists for people traveling on 280 towards San Francisco to get off. The other moves would still be available. If you're coming from San Francisco towards San Jose and you want to get off from 280 to get off to Stevens Creek, you could do that. If you're coming from Mountain View to Cupertino, you could still get off at Stevens Creek. What's the other move?
The Mountain View, San Francisco, all can be, that's it. San Jose's the one that...
So it's only the San Jose move that we're talking about?
Thank you. That's important, I think, for everyone to know that that's one particular move. If we go to option two, and that is to leave the existing configuration, it's pretty well-known and analyzed as far as the operational characteristics and the safety, that that would just not operate. And therefore, if we continued to force that particular option, the chances of getting it approved, or the chances that the city would want something that will not work, is probably remote. That leaves us with option number three, the Mary Avenue. And again, as you mentioned, there's been no approvals for Mary Avenue. Mary Avenue was one of the last alternatives to surface, and only surfaced because of the frustration in trying to get something else to work at the interchange at the Mary Avenue, then was brought in as an alternative. It has many approvals to still be, or to go through, and that is that the school district must approve some swapping of lands, some right-of-way acquisition. State has to still give its blessing. The federal highway administration has to prove it. There is a four-F process that must go through because there's acquisition of potential recreational land, such as a school property. This all could take eighteen to thirty months to finally get approval of a Mary Avenue alternative. So Mary Avenue by no means has had even any kind of a start in that process. A slight description of Mary Avenue is important. I think everyone knows that Mary Avenue is a large street. It has a right-of-way width of eighty-four feet, a curb width of seventy, all single-family homes back up to it, except for some siding, single-family homes at the intersections, and there are some frontage on the condominiums and apartments along the way. Several issues probably would come about if Mary Avenue was a viable alternative, deals with traffic character, of traffic coming from the freeways and being directed right on to local streets, traffic volumes. We have included in the report, and I won't go through all those details, as to comparison of the existing traffic, future traffic, if we've added the entire volume of traffic that is now measured at the existing off-ramp at 85 and 280. We've also given you a comparison of other streets in town as to what they carry, other collectors, two lanes and four lanes, and so forth. The final option would be is no freeway at all, and you would opt to not to extend the freeway and leave things as they are, and that would be on the basis that you find that the community needs the access, that one particular access from San Jose on 280 on to Stevens Creek more than the extension of 85. The next major issue, that's your one issue to resolve and/or to discuss, the next major issue is the Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road interchange with 85, and you probably have two options there. One is to defer any approval to that interchange and wait until after the vote in Saratoga has been completed to determine what is going to happen as to if there are any interchanges going to be constructed in that city. The risk of delaying, of course, that decision would be is that you may be forced into approving a certain interchange, knowing what the outcome is at the vote, that may put the burden of mitigating the impacts in Cupertino. The other option may be is to declare your, or declare the interchange configuration, declare your interest as to what you would be agreeable to approving, and let it be known that that's the interchange that you favor at this time. That possibly sends a signal to everybody that that is the interchange that will be built, or that's the only one that the city will approve at this time. This leads you now to the four options as to what you do with the freeway agreement, the performance agreement, because that's really the intent of this meeting as to direction, as to how you want to go about it. You have four options, in a sense, and maybe some subsets of those options, but option one is to defer any sign of the freeway agreement, performance agreement, until you know more about what's going to happen with these other issues. Option two is to allow only interchange construction to occur. This has advantage to the authority in the sense that they could start construction of the freeway and keep pace with their schedule, because the interchange construction would have been the first scope of work, or the first item of work, in their overall construction project. Option three would be to segment the 85 construction, as to allow both main line and interchange construction occur, but leave a portion of the freeway untouched, so that you at least have still some leverage in your future negotiations. And the final option, of course, is to say that all these others are less important, and the freeway is the most important, and actually go ahead and execute the freeway agreement, hoping that in good faith, there's some solutions will come about for the issues that are still outstanding. From option number one is your greatest leverage, which means that nothing gets done, but there's a delay in the construction. Down to your fourth option, which has no delay for the construction of freeway, but you relinquish all your leverage for any future negotiations in trying to solve some of these issues. I'll stop here, because I think there's other speakers. I think we can adjourn now. Mr. Will Kempton wants to address the city council, and then we'll have Paul Hensley from Caltrans give you a more detailed description of the alternatives that have been evaluated, and then we'll probably get into the audience where you'll take testimony.
Okay. Why don't we deal with the, is there any questions on the first presentation at this point? Okay. Why don't we deal with the access that Stevens Creek issued as a separate item first, because I think that's the majority of the people are here for, and then we can talk about the other one separately. Will, you going to do this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was just going to review briefly the...
Excuse me a minute, Will. The person speaking, Will Kempton, is the executive director for the Measure A Traffic Authority, and Will, we welcome you here this evening. We know you've got a tough job, and this is not going to make it any easier.
I think Paul has the toughest job tonight from Caltrans, but be that as it may, I just wanted to put in perspective, not only again for the council, but also for the public present, the relative roles of the agencies involved.
Is your mic on?
No, the people back there, and even our sound, have to get a little closer.
Is this better?
Yes.
Essentially, the traffic authority, as you've indicated, Mr. Mayor, is the agency which is administering the half-cent sales tax for highway improvements in Santa Clara County as a result of the November 1984 vote, which authorized the imposition of that tax and the application of the monies to three state highway routes, including Route 85. Our role in this process has been primarily to serve as a facilitator between, in addition to administering the funds, to serve as a facilitator between the Department of Transportation and the local jurisdictions. You've already referenced the requirement for a freeway agreement, that's in state law. The local jurisdictions must enter into this kind of an agreement with the state prior to construction of the freeway. The performance agreement is a new item. It is something that was created to deal with the more detailed requirements that the cities have asked to be included in agreements relative to the funding of the project. So essentially, the freeway agreement is an agreement between Caltrans and the city, which will govern the basic design features of the freeway. The performance agreement is a separate agreement with the traffic authority that deals more directly with mitigation measures, and is a commitment from the authority not to fund the project unless it is done to the specifications indicated in that agreement. We have been looking at the problems that you have before you, not only with respect to the 280-85 access, but also the Saratoga-Sunnyvale access. We have made our engineering consultants available to the Department of Transportation and to the city to try to work through these issues. Mr. Paul Hensley is going to take you through the detailed analysis of the 280-85 interchange and a discussion of the alternatives. I thought it might be helpful, before we get into that discussion in detail, to perhaps discuss a few of the terms with you. I committed to do this previously in our private talks, and I think it would be helpful for the audience. You're going to hear a number of terms tonight. They're engineering terms that relate to certain reasons why something can't be done, and there are about six that I'd like to just review briefly. We're going to be talking about curve radii, the radius of curves. That's simply the tighter the curve, the slower the speed. A loop that is in a tight area has a tight radius of curve. Obviously, if you're building a flyover or something of that nature, the radius of the curve is a little different. But again, that relates directly to speed. You're going to be talking about grades, the grade of the roadway. A grade-separated roadway with one level going over another level, it's hard to see in two-dimensional displays, but there is a requirement for a certain amount of clearance, and that is sixteen and a half feet from the top of the pavement to the bottom of the structure. So you need to keep that in mind. We're going to be talking about superelevation and tangents, and those are engineering terms that are difficult to explain, but I've tried to simplify those. Basically, on curves, there is a tilt. Any of you that have driven on the high-speed curves of these freeways around here notice there's a tilt. That's called a superelevation. Moving in one direction, before you can reverse that tilt, you need to have a level area, that's called a tangent. If that's referred to, that's what that means. We're going to be talking about merging requirements. Essentially, that's where you're coming together to try to occupy the same space on the freeway. We'll be talking about weaving conflicts. That's basically where you're exchanging space with another vehicle, where you're changing lanes and crossing lanes. And again, I just briefly mentioned the required clearance and the sixteen and a half feet. I think just a basic glossary there for the members of the public and a review for the council will be helpful in the course of this discussion. We've worked very diligently with your staff and with the Department of Transportation. As the council is aware, we've looked at twelve separate alternatives for this problem in trying to retain the access that is important to the city of Cupertino. Mr. Hensley from the Department of Transportation will now take you through the details of those alternatives.
Thank you, Will. Let me go over to the exhibits here. See, is this mic on?
Yeah, why don't you stand on this side, Paul, so the audience can see the...
Okay.
We'll look at your back.
I have to balance three things here, my notes and my pointer. First of all, I'd just like to go through a little bit of the description of the existing interchange, or the existing end of 85 that ends at Stevens Creek Boulevard right now, before I get into the rest of this, and I hope I get through my speech before the rest of this comes apart again. Basically, this photograph that we've got up here shows the existing 280-85 interchange and where it ends at Stevens Creek Boulevard. Essentially, you can make any movement from 280 to 85 in either direction, and then from 85 south to Stevens Creek, and then back again. The only movements that aren't available at Stevens Creek would be from the unconstructed portions of 85. When we designed the Route 85-280 interchange, when we were doing the environmental document for the 85 freeway, it was just a simple thing of extending 85 underneath Stevens Creek Boulevard. There would be ramps provided here, an on-ramp to southbound 85, and then an off-ramp from northbound 85 to Stevens Creek. What we found out was, when we looked at the traffic that we had, that the areas right in here where the people coming southbound on 85 would try to get off at Stevens Creek, the people coming southbound from southbound 280 to southbound 85 would try and weave across to get on 85. There is simply not enough room between where these two streams of traffic start to merge at this point, and then again where they would start to diverge at this point here, to safely make that move, and also operationally. We anticipate that it would be about Level of Service F, which would almost be a complete stop. We had the same thing over on the other side, that for the traffic coming on from Stevens Creek Boulevard, trying to cross the traffic from 85 that would be trying to get southbound on 280, again, there was not enough distance to safely make that weave. So we had to look for a solution as to how to eliminate that weave problem that we had. The solution that we came up with, and which was the proposal that we originally showed the city council, was to build a median barrier separating the 280 traffic and the 85 traffic. The barrier would extend underneath Stevens Creek Boulevard. That would prevent any traffic from coming down 85, getting off at Stevens Creek, and would force them to go under Stevens Creek. The 280 traffic would come under Stevens Creek and then merge back in south of Stevens Creek onto 85. Now, the problem is, now we had cut off all access from 85 to Stevens Creek. Our problem was how to provide that move. What we did is we looked at a distance from this point here, how far back we'd have to go to get the weave distance, so the traffic volumes from 85 could make a safe and operationally smooth-flowing weave with the traffic. And what we did was, we would sign the traffic here, that the traffic coming south on 85 for Stevens Creek would exit on this ramp that right now goes to southbound or eastbound 280. We would build a ramp and bring them in to the ramp on 280 back at this point, which would give us a little bit more than the weaving distance we would need. So 280 and 85 traffic would weave here, people wanting to get off at Stevens Creek would be able to get off here. And so that provided the move for everybody coming from 85. Now, we did the same thing in the other direction. Again, built a median barrier to separate the traffic here. If you look on the outside wall in the entrance there, we have what we call a geometric similar to these showing up on the wall, which show it a little bit better than this drawing does. So if you got a chance to look at it before you came in, hopefully you'll get a chance to look at it after you go out. But what it did was, by providing the barrier here, again, we separated the 85 traffic, but it left us the problem, how did we get the Stevens Creek traffic on to 85 northbound? Again, we did the same, somewhat similar, the same thing. This traffic would take this move that goes to northbound 280, we would take a ramp and bring it, slip it right in to this 280 to 85 northbound traffic. So in that way, almost every move was provided from Stevens Creek to 85 and 280. Now, on this side of the road going northbound on 85, we had all the movements covered. There was one problem with the way we had it set up on southbound 85, and that has to do with the movement coming northbound on 280 that currently comes along underneath the structures here, and loops back up on to 85, and then comes across and gets over to Stevens Creek and gets off at this point. What happened now with that concrete barrier in there, this traffic, once they got on here, was committed to going past Stevens Creek. There was no way that they can get off at Stevens Creek Boulevard. Now, as I said, all the movements were provided but that one movement, and that was the problem. And the proposal that essentially Caltrans proposed was to have that exactly what I described built. Now, the people who would come down and make this loop and would be currently getting off here would have to either use DeAnza Boulevard further to the south on 280, or would have to go past and use Foothill Boulevard to get off. Or they could go up to Foothill and then loop back, and then come back and get to Stevens Creek here. Now, that was the proposal that we originally came to the city council with. The city council asked us to look if there was any possible way of providing for that move from 280 to Stevens Creek Boulevard within the interchange area here. We had taken a look at it, even when we had come up against this problem, and we had been unable to find any solution, what we call geometrically, that would be safe and would operate smoothly. So we took another look at it, and with a consultant provided by the traffic authority, we again looked at a whole range of alternatives that are shown here. Again, all the alternatives had either safety and operational improvements, or that the impacts were such in the cost and the right-of-way that would be required that they would not be acceptable. And I'll just try and go briefly through the alternatives we have shown here. I don't want to get too much into tangents and superelevation, because I think as you get into it further tonight, you may hear a little bit more, and I think it's, probably will go for quite a while. But basically, we looked at all the possibilities in the interchange. Before I get a little further into these, we also looked at other possibilities south of Stevens Creek Boulevard, which are not shown here, which is McClellan, which is about right down here, and trying, could we come off any, maybe take the traffic off on McClellan and come back some way? What we ran into was an even worse problem, because there's a ramp from Stevens Creek south that comes on that that movement would conflict with. The only way we could get that movement in, we would have to eliminate the southbound movement from Stevens Creek to 85. The problem is that Stevens Creek is too close to 280, McClellan is too close to Stevens Creek. You just can't develop the distance you need to merge the traffic safely and to have an operationally acceptable freeway flow. I'll go through the alternatives that we looked at. They're numbered nine to twelve, and the numbering is sort of a little mixed up, because some of them turned out to be variations of the others. We looked at alternative one, which essentially was just trying to have them come up this loop and then slip over, but what we ran into was this movement in here, and this movement in here, we're all coming together at the same time. So you had three traffic flows that all came together in the same space, and from a safety point of view, that was unacceptable. Plus, we ran into problems that we would have to, as Will talked about, superelevation, that as we brought the curves together, and you have to flip the pavement, we would have to do it so fast that people would be unable to safely traverse it and maintain control of their car. And again, we found out that by the time we got emerged, we didn't have enough weaving distance. We still ended up with the same problem. We looked at another alternative, which was closing this loop here and trying to bring these people back further in here, crossing over on a bridge over this and bringing them in. Again, we ended up with the same problem. We had the 280 move, the 85 move, and this move all coming together and merging at the same point. In fact, as you go through these, what you do is it looks possible, but by the time you draw it up, you end up with the same problem. You don't have the weaving distance, and you're bringing all of the three streams of traffic together, and you end up having to eliminate one stream of traffic. There was one alternative that we did look at, and that's alternative number three, which was moving this access here, taking it off of the northbound ramp from 280 to northbound 85, taking it off, making a bridge, and looping completely over, and then coming back in on this side of the 85 ramp, so they could come in on the outside. That required additional right-of-way. We took about four... We took about four houses that were located in this area in here, plus we took the backyards of two others. Plus, the homes in this area would be looking at the back of about a 24-foot retaining wall plus a sound wall on top. And that required about 1,500 feet of structure, which was what we call a three-level interchange, which the first level would be 280, the second level would be 85, and then the third level would be that one movement over it. So it had significant right-of-way costs and visual impacts. Although, from the safety and operational viewpoint, it just met the criteria that we were looking at. But the other things that I mentioned essentially mitigated against that alternative. We looked at another alternative of coming across and over on this side and bringing it in here, so that we would merge it somewhere in here. Again, this one ended up, we took approximately 12 houses in that area, plus the backyards of nine others. We may have to relocate the PG&E towers that are back there. And we ended up, we didn't meet our weaving distance again. For all that money and those houses, we still did not meet the weaving distance. So, the other alternative we looked at was trying to take 280 traffic underneath and braid the 85 traffic over the top. That's structurally separate them, so you pass, one movement would pass underneath the other. Again, we ran into the same problem. By the time we drew it up, we didn't end up with the weaving distance and the operational capacity that we needed. So no matter which one we looked at and which one the consultant, the traffic authority provided, we ended up right back where we started from. So we have been unable to discover and any possibility of providing for that missing movement in the Route 280-85 interchange and the Stevens Creek Boulevard area. So that left us with only, the only possibility of looking somewhere outside the interchange for another way to provide for that movement to Stevens Creek Boulevard. So the council and then the city staff asked us, was there anything else, any other possibility we can look at? And that's where the Mary Avenue possibility came up. And what we did is we looked at the movement from here now that makes this move to come off to here, to try and figure out some way to get that movement into this area. And that's when we ended up looking at this possibility of taking the ramp off of here for that traffic that makes this move and comes down to here, taking them off at this location, back over 280 and into Mary Avenue, and letting that traffic then come down to here and then distribute along Stevens Creek Boulevard. That was the only other possibility that we could look at that was even as far as engineering-wise would be acceptable. That's strictly from that viewpoint. The move that, in the city report, is, the move we're talking about is, during the peak hour runs anywhere from 450 to about 550 cars, approximately 6,000 cars a day. That pretty well covers as to why we got to where we are and why we're looking at the particular alternatives. Basically, we have not found any way within the interchange itself to provide for that move, nor do we believe that there is any way possible. We've looked, Caltrans has looked at every possibility, and so has the consultant that has been provided by the traffic authority.
Paul, just so that everyone has the same information, maybe you could describe as much detail as you can, the present, your best guess for what that overpass at Mary Avenue, how it would be constructed, what it would look like, where the intersections would occur, et cetera?
Okay. Basically, they've got a couple of renderings here that show what the overpass at Mary Avenue would look like. Essentially, as I described, it would come off of 280 alongside of the high school here. The ramp would start just at the end of the high school here, the east end, and would extend into the high school property. It would not affect the hardball field at this location. It would extend into what is a, I believe, a practice softball field at the present time. It would take approximately two and a half acres out of the high school property. It would be designed for about 45 miles an hour, which is just about the minimum speed that we have for off-ramps. Would cross over 280 on a structure at this location, and then come back down onto the fill that's presently in place on Mary Avenue on the south side of 280. It would be essentially a one-lane off-ramp. It would have a shoulder. These renderings here show what it would look like. This one shows what it would look like from the ball field, and this shows what it would look like from, trying to look, looking northwest, looking from this direction here, showing the ramp and the cars as they would come over. The one thing that may not be clear here is there's a possibility of these sides being raised for noise. The cost of this is approximately exclusive of right-of-ways, a little over $2.2, $2.3 million. We don't have any right-of-way costs developed. The city does own the current right-of-way for Mary Avenue. There is a possibility of working with the school district to resolve the right-of-way issue as far as the school district is concerned.
Any questions upon?
Those are the projections. 450, that's an upper end.
Before we start asking questions back and forth here, let's try and keep it controlled here. Bert, the next thing I think we need to do is, one more time, enumerate the steps that would be necessary to pursue a Mary Avenue overcrossing.
Okay. The first step would be is to negotiate a trade or an acquisition of the school district, that's the Fremont Union School District, to acquire the necessary right-of-way and relocate some of the recreational facilities such as that softball field. The other steps would be that the Caltrans would make an application with the Federal Highway Administration to get approval for the overcrossing. It would then have to go through a 4F procedure, which will then, it's almost like an environmental impact report, to evaluate the right-of-way acquisition. And then there would be considerable amount of community input to determine what we would do after the freeway ends and the local road begins, which would be right after the ramp actually is connected with the intersection of Meteor. So there's, that step, I mean, that whole process may take anywhere from 18 to 30 months to complete.
Okay, and then that would only allow the construction to proceed? That would not, that 30 months, 18 to 30 months is only for the approval?
That's correct.
At the federal level? Okay. I think that's a little bit of background of that, and I'm trying to get as much information out as we can, because I know this is a brand-new issue for almost all of us. Before we open the meeting to the public, I think that it's important that we understand what we're trying to do here this evening, what the council is trying to do. I know what the Mary Avenue people are trying to do, you're trying not to have anything happen on Mary Avenue. But this situation we're dealing with, I heard somebody put it one time, is between a hard and a rock, rock and a hard spot. I can't even say it. We have an issue here that I think is, doesn't have a nice, easy solution. Whichever alternative we end up selecting, some part of the community is going to suffer for it. And I want to just go through the alternatives one more time, so we understand what we're all dealing with here. I think this is assuming that we believe Caltrans and all of the effort that's gone on, and that within the existing right-of-way, that it is not possible safely to make that move from San Jose, loop up, and get off at Stevens Creek. If we believe that, then the alternatives we're faced with are these. We would not have that access there. The traffic would be diverted to other off-ramps. That would be one, the first alternative. The second alternative would be to retain the existing configuration, which would be then force the cars to somehow or other cross those two lanes. I think all indications are that would be totally hazardous and probably be just, almost an impossible situation to pursue. The third alternative would be the Mary Avenue alternative. And the fourth alternative is not to have Route 85 be extended and keep the configuration the way it is. So we would ask that, when you make your testimony, if you could not only address your own personal concerns, but if you could, whatever help you could give the council in trying to identify the pluses and minuses of all the alternatives, would be really helpful. So at that point, we'll open the session to the public, and hopefully Mary Avenue has a spokesperson or spokespersons that can summarize the position.
Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm speaking on behalf of-
Say your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Owen Tassica, and I'm at 10467 Mary Avenue. And I'd just like to speak briefly, voice the concerns of a tiny community which will be most affected by the Mary Avenue proposal. I came to live at the Cassidy-Anza Village in 1974. I came from the south, the deep, deep south, from Australia. And at that time, the south end of Mary Avenue, where it terminated at Stevens Creek Boulevard, there was the remains of a marvelous old farmhouse and a water tower. And at the northern end, adjacent to the Cassidy-Anza Townhouse Village, there was a marvelous apricot orchard, which extended almost right to the 280. Now, we and the 84 other homeowners who lived there, we knew that someday, or that over the process of time, the traffic would increase along the 85, which is at our back door. And we accepted that. And we knew that someday, the Mary Avenue could possibly be extended, crossing the 280 across to Sunnyvale. And we accepted that someday that could happen. But we never imagined that we would have an off-ramp from the 280 going through a quiet residential area. And with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I have some, a couple of view graphs, which I think will help to illustrate the points very well. And with your permission, I'd like to show them.
We'll get the screen down for you here in a minute.
Do we have any control of this?
Yes. We can raise the view graph slightly.
I've put my name down.
It's easier.
It's quite a mouthful.
Now, if you could, because they want to hear you outside as well. If you can use the microphone, thank you. Just speak into the X.
I've taken the liberty of putting my name in the bottom corner here, because it's quite a mouthful. And I'd just like to point out the present situation. The present situation is that our small village, Cassidy-Anza, is situated right in the, I would say, the most vulnerable portion of Mary Avenue here. And so we have Mary Avenue here terminating in Stevens Creek Boulevard, right opposite DeAnza College. And then across here to the north, we have the 280, and finally, the 85 working its way down, as it does at the moment, into Stevens Creek Boulevard. And I'd like you to notice, Mr. Mayor and Council, is the significant neighborhood. There is a significant neighborhood here, which is sometimes known as the Nathanson Ranch area. There is also a primary school, the Garden Gate School. There is also a brand-new settlement developing here, which for want of a better word, I've called the Gerrard Homes. There are 14 homes in here. There is a street here, Lubec, another street, Meteor, all of which terminate in Mary Avenue, and I've endeavored by these red arrows to show the existing traffic pattern as it is today. I'd also like to remind you that there is a large settlement here, the Glenbrook Apartments. And finally, a very fine structure and built by the council and successive councils over recent years, the Memorial Park, and finally, the Senior Citizen Center. And I'd like to point out, Mr. Mayor, just what our little village here consists of. There are 84 townhomes, most of whom are owned by the residents, owner residents, about 150, men, women, and children. Some of the children are here tonight in the audience. And it's most noticeable that the average age of our small village is decreasing. That means to say, we have more couples having babies. And approximately 150 vehicles and an estimated property value of $12 million. And then I'd like to point out, Mr. Mayor, the number of exits which there are at present There are a significant number of exits onto Mary Avenue now, carrying existing traffic. Exits from the Oaks Shopping Center, the Memorial Park and the Seniors, the Glenbrook Village, the Cassidy-Anza Townhome Village of where I have my residence, and Lubec, and then the Cupertino Corporation Yard. I counted an extra two this evening that I had missed. And finally, the so-called Gerrard Estate, the Lock and Store Meteor Drive, making a total of 16 exits plus several drives which enter Mary Avenue from the Cassidy-Anza Townhome Village. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to draw your attention to what the situation will be if this off-ramp from the 280, if this scheme were pursued. Thank you. What we see is the massive traffic, as was recently described by the consultant from Caltrans. The traffic coming off from the 280, crossing an overpass, and down and working its way along Mary Avenue. Now, it's true that some traffic will work its way through this suburban area here, along Meteor, and some of it will work its way through Lubec into this suburban area and impact the Garden Gate School significantly. We know that happens, we know it will happen, because it's happening now. Crafty motorists, desperate motorists from Stelling Road already worked their way through here and already use Mary Avenue as a kind of a conduit to get to Stevens Creek Boulevard. And finally, I'd like to point out that the Cassidy-Anza residents will have to somehow get in and out of here at peak periods. It's a hazard. And I'd like to point out, Mr. Mayor, or like to remind the council, of the density that will be caused around the Oaks, and particularly on this intersection here. This is a hazardous intersection now, I can assure you, Mr. Mayor. And the council is about to build a community center here. The Memorial Park has heavy traffic, and we are concerned also about our seniors. There are many functions held in the seniors here, and we're most concerned about the congestion and the hazard that we accorded, not only at this intersection, but also right back along DeAnza. I'm not sure how our little village is going to be able to get, how are we going to be able to cross this massive traffic at peak periods to get home. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to submit this, that this council and recent councils have done some very fine things. The initiative for the community center, the development of Memorial Park, the development of the seniors, and we have a marvelous community college here. And we will be placing it all at a significant disadvantage to increase, as we propose, as it's suggested, the density of the traffic here and greatly increase the hazard to all these activities. And I would seriously ask the council to consider carefully before it takes this step. Thank you.
Mr. Tassica, if I may ask a question, please. Of the-
There's an echo.
Echo effect resounding throughout the hills. As Mayor Garroho had mentioned in the beginning- As Mayor Garroja had mentioned in the beginning, would also like input here, given the fact you would not care for it, for Mary, of the other alternatives, is there any preference that you would have?
Well, I would like to, I would like to point out, sir, that we have only seen these, these proposals here in a, in a matter of days. I think you understand that, that by the time our residents knew about this and we gathered together to, to, and to talk to city officials, it's only been a couple of days. I don't think we have an opinion yet. It's just too soon.
Okay.
I would like to think though, that there are some concerned and diligent citizens in this room tonight, many of them who do have, I think, some ingenious and excellent ideas. And we'd be very pleased to have a small working citizens committee to endeavor to help council come up with proper alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Tassica. Very good presentation.
Mayor members of the council, my name's Bob Hawn. I live at 10411 Castine, and I want to lift this screen.
I was going to mention there was a pointer there, but that's-
Easy, he's one of us. Owen has been part of the group that's been working, working on this little scheme, and he's an awfully hard act to follow. I wanted to respond to something to the mayor said, and what John Plungey said about asking for something constructive about this whole thing rather than just complaining about it. And it struck me when I was listening to the gentleman from Caltrans, when he pointed to this.
And said, "These people will just spread along Stevens Creek." The solution is to have these-
Could you use the mic, please, Bob? Use the mic, they cannot hear you outside.
It's up on the speakers, buddy.
They can't hear you outside if you don't, uh-
Am I in? Okay, I'm in. Okay. The, the suggestion of this off-ramp coming over Mary was going to put all the traffic to distribute, I think was the word, along Stevens Creek. And that bothered me. The assumption is that's where it wants to go. Is it, is that a good assumption? It's, it's just, am I making any sense? It's just assume, okay, if, if it's going to just distribute along here, why can't it distribute along Deanza?
I think it was indicating when it reached that point, it had to make that maneuver in order to go either west or east from that location.
Well, I think one of the points that we're going to make a, a little bit later is that it can just as easily, if it needs to distribute, distribute along Deanza Boulevard because this traffic is going to terminate right here as far as I can see. It's not, it's, it's either going to serve the college, or it's going to serve the shopping center, or it's going to serve some of this industrial area over here. And we don't know what that is.
I might just say that, that as best we can determine now, a good portion of that traffic goes up towards Bub Road and up into that whole southwest portion of the community.
There's been a group of neighborhood meetings from the people that live in the area bounded by Homestead, Stelling, Stevens Creek, and 280, to some extent including the people in Glenwood. And all, Glen, is that right? Glenbrook, I'm sorry. Glenwood was my high school. It seems that there's somewhere in excess of a, of a thousand residents in this area, all of them concerned about what's going to happen to Mary. As Owen pointed out, our, one of our major concerns is the additional traffic that is going to be pushed onto Greenleaf, a two-lane street which is now bumper-to-bumper during most of the day, let alone just, just peak commuting hours. We don't see that anything can be, really be done about that unless you wipe out a whole line of houses along, along Greenleaf. That's the only reasonable exit from this entire neighborhood during, um, peak commuting hours. There is one exit along Gardena, but it's, it's not possible when there's an awful lot of traffic on Glenwood. The people in Cassidy Anza Village you already heard about, the people that live at Glenbrook can only get onto Mary by making a left-hand turn. If there's commuter traffic on Mary, imagine what that's going to be like. Again, the access to the community park and the senior center are going to be inhibited if Mary Avenue is going to be a freeway ramp. How, there's a significant concern about parents whose children use Mary as a bike ride, as a bike route to Kennedy Junior High School in Montevista. It's the only reasonable route to these two schools. Now, when I talked to Mr. Viskovich last week, he said, "Well, we can put stop signs in there." I don't know how you can move cars with stop signs. Particular, anyway, I just don't know. I noticed also that the city council has identified certain, or has blocked off one-way streets during traffic hour. And we made Mary a one-way street. Now, that'd be unthinkable, anyway. We have some other concerns about the overflow parking. Mary at the upper end is being used as overflow parking for the senior centers and for Deanza students. Also, the, the crosswalk at the corner, right at, at the corner of Mary, right across from the college, is, is, is now constructed to handle hearing impaired people, and it is the major crosswalk to the entrance of Deanza College. So much for that. Now, we didn't have an awful lot of time to get all these things together, even though it seems as if we tried. So, we have a lot of things that we haven't even thought about yet. And we only- No, maybe if there's a question, I don't know. Thank you.
Shut that off, Will.
We're concerned about the impact on parking, I mentioned that. We're concerned about the additional traffic on Stelling. This is enormous concern. We're concerned about the fire and emergency access during, to these, because of the limited-access streets. We're concerned about the lock-and-store facility, which is going to be cut off, it seems to me, and access to the Corporation Yard. We're concerned about the credibility of the city council's representation to the developer of the Gerard Homes. We've seen a communication from the city to them that said that the city, the city's five-year plan considered no change in the status of Mary. We're also curious about the validity of the Caltrans study, which originally indicated that an off-ramp was either not necessary or that an exit was not necessary in this area. We, let's see. Okay, these, these are just a few of the things that have come up in the brief time that we've had to study this. And I want tonight to present to the, to the city council a petition signed by six-hundred-and-fifty-five members, six-hundred-and-fifty-five residents of this area, subscribing pretty much to what I have said and what Owen has said this evening. And I thank you very much for your attention.
Let you hand those to the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name's Christine Connell. I live, obviously, off of Mary Avenue. My concern here tonight is as a mother, as a soccer coach, as a PTA lady, although I'm not here officially as such. My kids will be going to Montevista and Kennedy next year. The way they get to school is either by me driving them or by taking bicycles. We just heard that the cars will be exiting from the freeway at forty-five miles an hour. Presumably, hopefully, they would slow down. But I'm not real happy about my children having to negotiate possibly a stoplight or something of this nature in order to merge with forty-five mile-an-hour traffic. That's really going to take a rather fast pedaling, I think. I'm really concerned about the impact, as it might be, on our neighborhood. The other thing I see, I hear that we can make a decision tonight whether to, to approve of this or not, and then later decide how we'll deal with the impact on the neighborhood, whether we'll have stoplights or whatever. It seems to me to be the wrong way around. I think we would need to hear exactly how the stoplights would be in place, how we would deal with the impact, before a decision would be made, before we could really decide what should be done.
Let me clarify that, if I could, because I think it's important to understand what we can and what we can't do this evening in regard to Mary Avenue. The, about, the only thing the council could do this evening would be to indicate a preference for that alternative and have it pursued. There would still be a whole series of additional mitigation, investigations, and whatnot that would have to be gone through before any type of formal approval could take place. That's at least a six-month process through a series of public-
It seems to me the studies probably need to be done before the even preliminary approval might be given. So, we've dealt with the kids going to Montevista and Kennedy. It's not a safe route. The thing that I think needs to be made clear is that Mary Avenue is the only exit from our neighborhood in that direction. In many neighborhoods, you can turn east or west or north or south. From our neighborhood, as you can see from the aerial photograph here.
The whole area can only exit onto Mary.
Can you, I can ask you to use the mic too, because otherwise they, they-
This whole area can only exit onto Mary Avenue or to Stelling, which isn't, I believe, shown on here.
Let's break this off.
Stelling, at the present time, is essentially as full as it can be. And it's going to get worse because the community center will be built there. So the only exit from our neighborhood is onto Stelling or Mary. If we talk about four-hundred-and-fifty extra cars, right now, it takes us two goals to get out onto Stevens Creek at rush hour in the morning, between, say, seven-thirty and nine-thirty. If we had four-hundred-and-fifty cars, then traffic going to school, going to work, is going to be severely impacted. The thing that I think we need to consider most of all is who will be negatively impacted. As city council members, I hope that you're my representative and my kids' representative and the representative of the local neighborhood. I don't know who uses the exit from 280. I know it may be some people going to Deanza, it may be people in the neighborhoods beyond Bub Road. But they do have alternatives. They can take Highway Nine, they can take Sunnyvale-Saratoga Road, they can take Foothill Boulevard. Those are roads that are designed for commuter traffic. Mary Avenue is a neighborhood street. It's the street for the kids to get to the park. It's the street for kids to get out of the park. It's the street for seniors to get to the center. I talked to a couple of senior citizens outside their room there earlier in the week, and I said, "Are you aware of this fact?" And one of the old ladies, I thought summed it up beautifully. She said, "They wouldn't do that to us. They'd take much better care of us in Cupertino." Thank you.
I live at 21425 Rumford Drive in Cupertino. And I've been a resident of Cupertino for, for eight years and a resident of the county for fifteen. And I think at first I'd like to say, I really love my neighborhood. And since discovering the news of this proposal, I have found one of the reasons why I do love my neighborhood is my neighbors. But specifically, I'd like to address issues relative to the discussion tonight. And specifically, the development, Gerard Development that was previously pointed out on Millard Lane. And that is a development, I love the neighborhood so much, I'm just moving a block and a half away. So I have some concerns about that development that I'd like to bring before the council this evening. Millard is a, if you're not familiar, is the council familiar with the Millard Lane? I know you've had discussions in the development process in regard to this. It's a cul-de-sac, and as such has only one exit, and that is onto Mary. And I think that brings up an important issue that has been brought up for Cassidy Anza also, is that there is only one exit. And onto that street, that if the traffic were to be increased significantly, would affect public safety. In addition, I, I don't believe the council is aware of that two of those homes have siding, two of the fourteen homes have one side that will be right on Mary. And the other homes have backup, it's the backyard, that was mentioned earlier. Again, as was, as Christine Connell just mentioned, the children that attend junior high school and high school will have to access the school via Mary, including my own children. It's been pointed out that Mary is seventy feet wide with an eighty-some-odd-foot right of way, and the implication being that it could handle the traffic. Well, my question is, can it handle the traffic safely? Will the potential for accidents be increased? I am wondering if anyone on the council or in the Public Works Department is aware of the current accident rate on Mary, if they know the figures? Because I do have the figures from the Santa Clara County Sheriff Department. Well, in the first four months of this year, Mary has had only one reported accident, and it was non-injury. In the year nineteen eighty-seven, there were only three reported accidents, also non-injury. What I'm trying to say here, Mayor and Council, is that it's a very safe street presently. And I would argue that increasing the traffic at four-hundred-and-fifty cars per hour at peak period must and will increase that accident rate. I cannot believe that more cars plus children equals more safety. I don't feel that can be possibly mitigated with stop signs or any other physical means that's currently available. The past weekend was the Fourth of July weekend, and I reviewed with my son the Declaration of Independence. And I'd like to close with just a little sentence from that document that I thought was very apropos to bring up this evening. The Declaration of Independence says, "Governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." Ladies and gentlemen, I cannot consent to the Mary Avenue alternative.
Just out of curiosity, what are the yellow ribbons that you're all wearing?
That's to signify that we're solid in this effort to, to try to convince council that the alternative of Mary may not be in the best interest of the community.
Okay, thank you.
So.
I think it should also be pointed out that, that the process we're going through here is also something that our forefathers wanted us to have, and that's an open forum to discuss and be able to view all the issues and be able to do it just in this fashion. And it's a very healthy process.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Joe Hauser, and I live on 21461 Milford. I back up to Mary. I'm in the Nathanson Ranch subdivision. I would like to discuss basically what the situation is currently as far as the exits in Cupertino are concerned, and what the impact would be of this one particular portion of an exit that we're talking about. Currently, in Cupertino, we have exits on 280 at the edge of the city, Foothill Boulevard, Highway 85 is an exit of some sort, Deanza Boulevard, Wolf Road, and at the other edge of the city, we have Lawrence Expressway. On 85, we have, on the edge of the city, Homestead, Highway 280 again, Stevens Creek Boulevard, and a proposed exit at Prospect or Rainbow, whatever they finally decide on. That's about-
There will be one at Deanza Boulevard.
Excuse me?
There will be one at Deanza Boulevard.
Deanza Boulevard, okay. That is about- That is about seven or eight or nine exits for a city the size of 40,000 people, nine square miles, give or take, a little bit. Of all the exits I've just named, none of them are residential streets. Mary is a residential street. If you go down 101 and go through some of the cities on 101 on the way to Southern California, you will see signs usually in front of large, some towns that say, "So-and-so City, next four exits, so-and-so City, next 10 exits." No city the size of 40,000 people has that many exits. We are loaded with exits in this community.[641.66][641.66](APPLAUSE). Well, what do all these exits accomplish? It tends to fragment the community. We have portions of the community that are locked in because of this exit, we have portions of the community locked in because of that exit. The community is not a community any longer. They're bits and pieces of the community. We have harder traffic control because we have more cars that come out of these exits onto our streets. What is this caused? We have situations such as Stelling, Blaney, and Bub Road, which have stop signs all over the place to try to make some hay out of all this. We have Pacifica, which has barricades during various hours. We have Rainbow, which you can't cross Stelling, can't cross Saratoga-Sunnyvale. We have Pepper Tree and Kerwin, which they have turn restrictions, and I'm sure there are plenty more which I've missed. Why should we add more streets to this list? If we go through Mary, there are bound to be stoplights or stop signs or something because otherwise the community can't get out onto Mary. Why cause another street of this type? If Mary is used as an off-ramp, more traffic would cut through the residential neighborhood, as been mentioned before. We feel that media and Lubec will be used extensively to get to Stelling Road. If, on the other hand, you put stop signs, left-hand turn restrictions, anything of that nature, onto Mary to prevent cars from hitting through those residential streets, then you're going to have traffic during the peak hours backed up right onto the freeway 280. Because as you stop at a stop sign, it takes time for each car to get through, and if you look on your map, there isn't very much distance between there and the off-ramp back onto 280, especially at 450 or 500 cars an hour. Obviously, the residents of our community are going to have a very hard time getting onto Mary, getting off of Mary. It's been suggested that if there is a left-hand turn restriction and if we actually use that off-ramp, that we would have to come down to the end of Mary, down to Stevens Creek, make a U-turn, come up the other side of Mary to get back into our neighborhood.[782.63][782.63](APPLAUSE). I don't think that's a good solution, obviously. The current situation at the Stevens Creek exit of Mary, to make a right-hand turn in the morning, is rather difficult. We have a lot of people who use the cross, we have pedestrians who cross over to Deansa College, we have a lot of handicap people in our community who use Deansa College, and the light is not long enough currently for too many cars to make a right-hand turn after the pedestrians have made their move across the street. Obviously, you can say, "Let's increase the light." Well, if you increase the light, then you have got less light for Stevens Creek. Somebody's going to lose out on all this. If we add 450 cars an hour more, right now, it takes two to three lights sometimes to make that right-hand turn. How many more lights is it going to take to make that turn? Now, who would the Mary off-ramp convenience? Well, I've made my own little study here, and I don't know how valid it is, but anyway, it appears to me that most of the people who would use that particular off-ramp would either go to Deansa College in the morning or evening, or would go to the Bub Road area for employment. In both cases, those people would come from outside of our community, because they're coming from the San Jose area. Anybody who goes to Deansa College or Bub Road in the mornings or in evenings for that matter, who lives in our community, would find other routes to get there. They would not be necessarily on 280. Who does it not affect? Well, I don't think it's going to affect Apple, because most of the people who use Apple will get off a Deansa exit. I don't think it's going to affect the Oak Shopping Center, because the Oak Shopping Center, actually, most of their patrons, I feel, are locals, people who live, who are represented right here in this audience, and Oak is still going to be accessible to other people, even if we don't have this exit. And those people who live in other parts of Cupertino, who would now get off at that exit, would be able to get off at the proposed Deansa exit, so they would continue straight through. I don't believe that any 400 cars necessarily would come down that thing and get off at that exit, but that's up in the air, I understand that. You're the members of our city council, you represent us, we voted for you, we deserve to be considered over and beyond outside interests of our city, interests outside of our city, just as the Saratoga City Council protects their interests. Saratoga obviously doesn't want any exits. We've got nine, 10, or 11 exits right now.[962.23][962.23](APPLAUSE). My family and myself moved into the Cupertino area about 12 years ago. We selected Cupertino for many, many good reasons: schools, community involvement, proximity of shopping areas, and a quiet neighborhood. Well, before we moved into this particular neighborhood, we very carefully investigated Highway 85, what was going to happen to 85, where Mary stood at the time. There was no indication at that time, obviously, that there was ever going to be any kind of interchange through Mary. Everything looked like it was set as far as the Highway 85 exits were concerned. We therefore chose to live where we live. We think we made a good decision, we have some wonderful neighbors here. I think that the Cupertino city council would be making a dangerous precedence by choosing the Mary solution. First of all, it's a neighborhood area. It's a neighborhood that is quiet, a neighborhood that does not want this solution. By making a neighborhood, a quiet residential street, into an off-ramp, you're starting to cause what I call a mini Los Angeles effect, where you have off-ramps almost everywhere. You're obviously going to increase the safety, noise, pollution, I'm sure other people have told you this, and other arguments of this nature have come up before. In general, I think that the Mary Avenue off-ramp is a bad idea that endangers a neighborhood to convenience of few drivers who would have to only go a few blocks out of their way to go where they're going. In other words, they would have to get off, instead of Mary, they would have to get off at Deansa Boulevard or Foothill, one or the other, and that's only a few blocks away from wherever they're going. Most of these drivers, I don't feel, would even live in our community, that you're helping. I'd like to see us keep our neighborhood and our city a nice and safe place to bring up our kids, and I therefore urge you to eliminate Mary as a consideration, to consider leaving the freeway exactly the way it is without that particular exit the number-one solution.
My name is Marshall Goldman, and I live at 10401 Castine Avenue. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I just want to say that I consider it a great honor to be able to live in a place where the citizens can get up and address the members of the city council or whomever without fear of recrimination one way or the other. And I think that's a great thing that we have, and it's something that we want to preserve. And I think that the people that have spoken today have tried to lay out their argument in the best possible fashion, and we respect the fact that the city council has a very difficult task, and sometimes a thankless task, and we appreciate that. I also have lived in Cupertino for eight years, and I've lived in this area for about 20 years, and I'm a native Californian, so if that makes any difference.[1207.92][1207.92](LAUGHTER). What I've heard in talking with our neighbors, in talking with some of the members of the council, and we were able to talk with the Director of Public Works, he was very gracious to give us his time, and I've heard, I think, four major catchwords: inconvenience, safety, community, and no alternatives. In the first place, we are not engineers, so it would be fruitless for us to address the abilities or the effort or the logic of Caltrans' proposal and recommendations to date. We have not had the time, we do not have the technical background, we do not, we're not privy to all the information that they are. So, I mean, we cannot profess to say that we can engineer this better than they can. However, in the study that I was able to see, I see that at Mary and Stevens Creek, currently, we have 129 cars at that intersection, and with the proposed off-ramp, we're going to have 629 cars. Now, that to me is about a 500% increase in traffic. Now, that's in the PM. In the AM, the numbers are 357 now and 807 later. That's 250%. I've been told that the computers have looked at the situation, and they've analyzed the intersection, and the intersection can handle it. Now, I'm not a computer, and I don't understand the computers, and that may be the wrong thing to say in this neighborhood, but--[1328.33][1328.33](LAUGHTER). I didn't say I didn't trust them, but--[1332.33][1332.33](LAUGHTER).
That's a mistake.[1334.65][1334.65](LAUGHTER).
Anyway, it seems to me if you're sitting in your car waiting two stoplights in the morning under existing conditions, and the traffic increases by 250 to 500% by the studies that we have in front of us, does that mean you're going to be sitting in your car for 10 stoplights or for six stoplights? I mean, obviously, there's going to be a serious impact on that intersection. And essentially, the problem is that you have the residents of the Nathanson Ranch area that are going to be inconvenienced by an off-ramp versus the residents that have had the use of the exit for 10 or 15 years or so, and they're going to be inconvenienced also. So, that's kind of one community against the other, a choice of one person's inconvenience versus the other person's inconvenience. To that point, I would say that even so, those people are going to still be inconvenienced because they're still going to be waiting in their car at that intersection. The next point that I want to mention is the point about safety. Speakers before have enumerated the number of safety considerations. If you look at that area right there, where if you look at the Deansa College, the Oaks, Glenbrook Apartments, and the Memorial Park, right now, that is a community. If you drive by there any day, you will see people with babies and strollers crossing anywhere on Mary. And there is a flow between the park, between the shopping center, between the apartments and the rest of the residents here, and between Deansa College. So, I mean, we have a very viable community right now. I think that is an asset to Cupertino as a whole. I think that if we make a change in that by putting in the off-ramp, we change that radically, and maybe we add the asset of having this exit, but we depreciate the sense of community and the actual structure that we have in its place. I think that's a mistake, I really do. I don't have the studies to prove it, but I think it's a mistake. The final thing is that Caltrans has said, and we have to believe them, as you said, if we believe Caltrans, and we believe that they're making a very good faith effort to identify all the alternatives. They've said there's no alternative other than what we're being presented with right now, and this is after three months' worth of study. Well, in terms of the alternatives, we had an informal meeting the other day, and another alternative surfaced, which might be viable. So, I think there might be other alternatives. We don't know. Maybe, you know, there might be something out there that will solve the problem without taking out houses, without inconveniencing the rest of the communities, et cetera. I think it's a stronger position for the city council to take, to say that we're not going to turn another residential street into a driveway, into an arterial way, because we were presented with there are no alternatives. I would prefer to see Cupertino stand up and say to whomever the authorities are, "We're not going to accept this. You've got to go back to the drawing board, you've got to figure something out." Now, there is some precedence, I think, in this. When this intersection was originally designed in, I guess, 1970, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, nothing has changed in the land configuration between when it was designed and today. The best that I can understand is that there are some concerns over more traffic than there was before, possibly, and there are some design restraints that exist now that could not have existed before, because it was designed to work. Nothing has changed. Now, as I see it, Cupertino is faced with a problem, and the problem they're faced with is they've got a proposal for an off-ramp to make a residential street into an arterial or freeway-type of exit. I don't think that's Cupertino's problem. I think that's the problem of the people that originally designed the interchange. Just as Saratoga says, well, they're going to, they're going to vote for a freeway, they vote for a freeway, well, that didn't mean a freeway with interchanges, we've got to have another vote, whether we have interchanges or not. We're accepting a very bad solution, or we, that should have been designed to begin with, should have been solved 20 years ago. That's not our fault. I don't see why we should have to bear the brunt of that. And I don't think that the community should be forced to choose between one person or the next person. I think that we should put the responsibility where it lays, and either get the thing designed, a solution that works with their considerations, or take into account that we have safety considerations on our residential streets as much as Caltrans has safety considerations on their freeways, and there's got to be some balance.[1723.33][1723.33](APPLAUSE). Final thing I'd like to say is that, as I see it right now, Mary is being viewed as an asset to solve the problem, because it's a strip of pavement that will connect very easily to an off-ramp, and that solves the problem very easily. I think Mary is an asset in a different way, is it's a residential street that connects communities, that is used for flow back and forth between communities, and it should be emphasized as such, and it should be kept that way as an asset and not turned into a negative. Thank you very much.[1769.13][1769.13](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor, council members, and neighbors. My name is Don Elliott. I live at 10426 Anson Avenue. My house faces directly onto Lubec, so I think that positions myself in this discussion tonight. But I'd like to address myself to the-- But I'd like to address myself to the other part of the question that you posed at the beginning of this meeting, and what are the alternatives? When I moved here 18 years ago, the first trip I made to my office in South San Francisco on 280, I thought I'd gotten on the wrong highway, because I was the only person driving.[620.04][620.04](laughter) I feared that I had gone, you know, past the barricade without knowing. Obviously, since that period of time, there's been a great deal of traffic buildup. But one thing I'd like to point out, I don't think the problem is going to be at Stevens Creek. The problem exists about a half a mile north of there, where 85 joins 280, whether you're going east or west. You have to play hopscotch now to turn off 85 onto 280. You cross two lanes of traffic before you reach 280. Coming from the San Francisco area to get onto 85 and make an exit going east on Stevens Creek, you cross six lanes of traffic. I don't see where the traffic pattern is going to be that much improved, no matter what they do with the interchange. The pattern exists there now. The one thing I think that will reduce the problem, however, if you open up 85 beyond Stevens Creek, the traffic that normally today turns off on Stevens Creek will continue, because a great percentage of the traffic is people who live beyond that intersection. So, I said, I don't know, we haven't discussed the present turnoff for the westbound traffic on 280, where they turn off to get onto 85. That seems to be pretty easy access to 85. If the people from Mountain View are going to continue to be able to exit at Stevens Creek, if the people coming from San Francisco, Palo Alto area can still exit on Stevens Creek, then I don't know why that existing access for the westbound 280 people can access at Stevens Creek as well. Now, I think that's an alternative. If it's not an alternative, then certainly DeAnza Boulevard in Foothill is an alternative.[768.44][768.44](applause)
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Avery. I've worked for 10 years with the management of the Glenbrook Apartments, which is on Mary Avenue, 36 acres, 517 units, 1,034 vehicles. Some regard it perhaps as the finest garden apartment in the area. We have 2,200 feet of frontage on Mary Avenue, which was regarded in this report as some My father constructed Glenbrook in 1970 after working closely with the city, purchasing 36 acres and receiving assurances that Highway 85 would be submerged as it passes our 2,200 feet of Mary Avenue, and that's worked well. What I first want to address is the notice and information for this meeting, and with all due respect for the Cupertino staff, we were shocked to hear that an unconventional exit might dump freeway cars on our neighborhood's street. We were more shocked to witness the process towards this approval. It's very different than some of the other processes we've been involved with, sound walls in Mountain View, other things. On Monday, June 27th, we received a notice that a hearing would take place, and this is a rather large issue. So, about a little over a week ago, my father, who probably has more to lose financially than anyone in this room, was going out of state, so it just was quite a surprise to us. We began to phone everyone. Everyone was in a panic, the neighbors, our residents, only some of whom are here because we didn't have time to get the word to them, Sunnyvale residents, everyone but the city staff, it appeared. The city staff said, "This is very, very preliminary. Please understand that, except Mary Avenue is the only answer. We have 12 options." They repeated time and time again, "We have 12 options," but they've all been ruled out. We've been working on it for months, but the hearing will address the only option that works, Mary Avenue. We were told that by staff. We also heard conflicting information from staff. On July 6th, we received our first piece of data from the city that we all have here. And what I see here is a lot of hard factual data that seems to support using Mary Avenue. The negative data has not been researched, it's referred to as other issues, and that's it, except for one, and that is, the biggest concern, and I quote, "is the freeway character bringing the freeway drivers onto a residential street." And they say it can be resolved by transferring the habits of the motorists.[976.13][976.13](laughter) Traffic control devices and design of landscaping and other architectural treatment that would give it the local street character. So, I'm not sure how much a psychologist was paid to come up with that, but it's ridiculous, I should add that unlike the single-family homes, we have a 15-foot setback to 100 bedrooms on Mary Avenue. We have won national awards for our landscaping, perhaps a psychologist could improve upon it, but we have rolling lawns that go to Mary Avenue, 15 feet away from 100 bedrooms. It's talked about, it's preliminary, 18 to 30 months off, but I think, speaking like the homeowners, we hope to own Glenbrook forever, and we hope to get rid of this problem, and 18 to 30 months off is extremely close when you plan to be involved forever. What I get a feeling from, and it's just a gut reaction from being involved in this, is that there's some pressure on the city to get in agreement with Caltrans or to move ahead, and there's some type of urgency, because we're not used to this type of non-involvement on our part up to this point. I almost get the sense that, rather than a public hearing where you hear the public, so many of us predicted that we would be coming here naked, no information. Well, we got it today, and as predicted, city council members began to say, "Please say your piece, but also give us your alternatives." We have no time, we were given this today.[1094.58][1094.58](applause) I want to address two more points. One is what items we don't know about at this time. The traffic figures, I don't know if they're current figures, if they're year 2010, I've heard lots of figures. Vehicle safety, how is it conceivable, just using our complex with 1,000 vehicles, virtually all that turn left onto Mary Avenue to get out to Stevens Creek, how is it conceivable to meld our two entranceways to our complex with these 1,000 people going out in the morning, making left turns onto what is a sharp curvilinear shape of our property and out onto Mary Avenue? We now, because of the size of our complex, have our own right turn lane into the complex, but there's no provision for anything going into Mary Avenue exiting our complex. Pedestrian safety is the next issue. How is it conceivable to provide safety for our 1,034 residents, many of whom are pedestrians who walk directly across Mary Avenue? I guess you would call it jaywalking, but it's a quiet street. Why do they do that? Because the Oaks is across the street, it has nighttime amenities, restaurants, bookstore, and other types of uses. And on a larger view, excluding our complex, senior citizens and the Senior Citizens Center, joggers, bike riders who use the park. My next issue is with parking. We currently have a full apartment, and the overflow from within the complex parks on the street. Now, I understand that would be eliminated, as would bike lanes, as would the diagonal parking on the street, I don't know. As far as traffic counts, there are no dates in here, no times. Could it have been, for example, during one of our worst vacancy times, when over 100 units were vacant, which would be another 200 cars missing? There's also a large emphasis on Mary and Lubbock as a point to do traffic counts, which avoids the entire traffic of our property, which turns left to get out to Stevens Creek and avoids Lubbock.[1247.33][1247.33](applause) We were told by staff as recently as this week that there was not a traffic count on Marion Stevens Creek. Today, I see a traffic count on Marion Stevens Creek in this report. As far as lack of weaving distance, which has been a big issue tonight, and why the other 11 alternatives were ruled out, or several of them, one staff engineer that we met with informed us that the Mary Avenue proposal does not have enough weaving distance, meaning a person coming off of Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road, merging onto 280, going north, has to confront, right now, two lanes going onto 85, and would now have to confront our Mary Avenue exit. So, in order to go to San Francisco, they have to battle three lanes of this type of traffic, and we were told that the distance wasn't there.[1311.01][1311.01](applause) The last issue, what we do know, we do know that we have one of the most successful neighborhoods in Cupertino. As I said earlier, we've won national awards with our apartment complex, the park is a terrific, terrifically planned amenity to the neighborhood, the Senior Citizens Center is thriving, and we all know that the future will continue in that regard, and the shopping center that we all walk to directly across the street. And we have good access to Highway D5, which is submerged and relatively quiet. I regard this as excellence in planning. Anyone who has not been to the area should walk through the neighborhood. But it's beyond our wildest imagination that a freeway would dump cars 15 feet from our 100 bedrooms, and I'm just speaking regards to our property. One thing we do know also is that we would not be here, so, speaking for our company, be here so naked, with no preparation. And with all respect to Caltrans, I imagine that most people that are threatened the way we are hire a traffic engineer to look at the information. We could trust on good faith, but I think it's good to do your own homework, and you've given us no opportunity. As a conclusion, if you can put yourself in our shoes, we sort of view this as a Los Angeles-type solution that came down the pike. No time to prepare, no time to be educated, educate others around us, and obviously, speaking on behalf of our company, our knee-jerk reaction is to try to stop the snowball and to get very, very legal, as legal as is necessary, spend as much money for as many attorneys as is needed to try to stop this. And I would offer that, on the other hand, we would rather take all that money for however long it took, or for however many years it lasted, in a legal process, and give it to the city today to try to find a solution, or contribute towards buying a house, or a backyard, or two houses, or whatever. But as of right now, from a legal point, we view this as a taking of our property rights, taking of our environment, and we would join the neighbors in trying to fight it at whatever length.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Wendell Stevens. I live on Anson Avenue. I've been a resident of Cupertino for 10 years at that location. I'd like to speak to you about several issues, and first, about the cultural area of what I call Cupertino. That's the area that involves Flint Center, DeAnza College in general, our Memorial Park, our senior center, the Oaks Shopping Center. I think if you were around on July 4th and saw the thousands of people pouring over to DeAnza, spending the day at Memorial Park, and our anticipated use of your community center, perhaps even the DeAnza Racket Club, the leisure cultural center of Cupertino is in that area. And when I look at what the projected circumstance would be involving in bringing the traffic into Stevens Creek on Mary, I cannot think of a single plus to that cultural center. And I certainly cannot think of a single plus to the 300 or 400 homes we call Nathanson Ranch, to the 100 or so units we call Casa DeAnza, to the how many hundred units Mr. Avery just discussed in Glenbrook Apartments. When I look at the over 3,000 residents in that area, which is almost 10% of Cupertino's population, I cannot think of a single positive advantage to these people. And yet, the most dramatic sacrifices are being asked to support that alternative, as you call it. But can you think of a single positive? We met with Bert for several hours yesterday, we couldn't think of a single positive aspect of it to those 3,000 people. And in your opening statement, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciated the comment you made, that you were looking for a solution which blessed the whole community. We have nearby schools in this cultural center too, past DeAnza College, and I want to, again, reiterate the point that's been made, we have heavy pedestrian use and bicycle use already in fairly heavily-traveled streets, having to cross and go through DeAnza College and so forth to get to our schools. The point is made that some of the streets that these kids have to cross, such as Stevens Creek and Bob and McClellan are busy streets, I don't think we want to make it four hurdles that they have to cross and endanger themselves. The point, one of the points when we met with Bert, and he was very generous in his time, and I'm quite impressed with his capabilities, and if I seem like I'm negative toward him, it's nothing personal, I'm trying to make a point here.[1655.63][1655.63](laughter) I've coached teams opposite Bert, and he's an excellent manager in every level of life.[1662.53][1662.53](laughter)
Well, you've never forgiven him.[1665.13][1665.13](laughter)
But he made the point that Mary Avenue is a wide street, and it can handle the flow. It's a wide street, but it's not a well-designed street. I was pleased that Nora made a comment earlier about the number of accidents that occurred along the street, under conditions that are fairly likely traveled. But I must point out that we play tag, perhaps, with the people from Glenbrook every now and then, in trying to dodge the traffic, because when you come around that S curve there, it's not a dramatic S, but it is an S curve, there aren't adequate sight distances always, and you have to be very careful. And I want to point out also that as you come from Mary onto Stevens Creek, when my daughter was learning to drive, I cautioned her that this was probably the corner that required the most mental alertness of anyone she'll meet in Cupertino, because she has to make a right turn off of Mary. You have the handicapped crossing, you have the bus people getting off and crossing over to DeAnza, you have the traffic coming at you from Mary, you have U-turn traffic coming back in, when you think you've got an opening, and you have traffic crossing over from DeAnza College coming into your flow. If you're not alert, it can be very dangerous, especially when you're trying to get to the high school and get over to an outer lane. So, it's the one thing, I think, that parents worry about, young drivers learning to drive in a fast-paced urban society. So, the safety is a concern that I have. I think it's also, the main point I want to make to the city councils tonight, is that we've got a standards problem. Caltrans has standards, and that's good. Cupertino has standards. We met your standards. The Glenbrook Apartments met your standards, yours and your predecessors, when you allowed homes to be developed there. Now, you have to ensure that the city maintains its standards, and the standards, that's your part of the agreement, is to maintain that as a residential street and not as a highway artery. street, and not as a highway artery.[600.04][600.04](APPLAUSE). The gentleman from Caltrans, representing Caltrans tonight, said he considered every alternative, yet with a few hours with Bert, as Marshall pointed out, another alternative surfaced. It's not very good, but it's not one that was one of the alternatives. When you say you've met, you've considered every alternative, it's only every alternative you've considered. And when somebody else comes up with an alternative, if it looks like you can get away with, you can relax and quit thinking. You have to maintain Cupertino's standards and not spend a neighborhood to solve a Caltrans problem. They have to solve...[642.66][642.66](APPLAUSE). Caltrans must solve its own problems. It cannot have Cupertino's tanks north of 280, it cannot have Somerset Homes west of 85, it cannot have our homes, our street, on the east side of 85.[663.82][663.82](APPLAUSE). Just as you would raise a parent, you maintain your standards, and you don't change them when your kid gets angry. We have met our residential standards, and there isn't a person in here probably, when they went and bought their homes and didn't check with the city and find out what was going to happen to Mary, and have their worries put aside. The ink is hardly dry on the Gerard Home promises, and yet we are considering validating the city information given them. I want to talk for a moment about some of the information that we have in math models. I'm a technical man, I have a PhD, I do math models all the time, and I understand how they're put together and why they're put together, I understand how they're supposed to be used. We have heard a lot of numbers. The gentleman from, for example, the gentleman from Caltrans pointed out, we have a flow of 450 to 550 cars that we're worried about coming off of 280. That's a 20% variance. Now, if you can't nail it down any closer than 20% today, how much confidence will you have in predictions 10 years from now? Math models are often developed on a linear assumption. That is, you assume, well, we've got a good, robust economy now, people are moving in, we're building, and it'll stay that way forever, for the next 10 or 15 years. Well, life is not linear. And those predictions are going to be no more accurate than Nancy Reagan's astrologer.[761.01][761.01](LAUGHTER). They are only good for predicting trends.[768.82][768.82](LAUGHTER). They are not quantifiably trustworthy. So don't get mesmerized into the technical arguments you hear from engineers. And that's an engineer giving you that warning.[780.51][780.51](LAUGHTER). The corridor that comes down 85, which I voted for, which I think is a good thing for the community, the people that live along that corridor are already paying the ultimate price, in terms of noise and stress. It's not right to invade the neighborhood and ask them to pay an even higher price. Consider the Casa Deansah Homes, bounded by a 6- to 12-lane highway on one side, and you want to put a traffic artery on the other side. Have you ever driven down a highway at 50, 60 miles an hour, and felt real tense in traffic, and then you come off onto a nice residential street, and all of a sudden you relax, and you didn't realize you were that tense? Well, the people that live bounded by highway arteries, and these technical solutions that we talk about, will have a higher level of stress. And what does a higher level of stress do to an individual's health? It doesn't help it. We could have our own, not to scale, hopefully, but we could have our own little love canal there, building a bad environmental solution. We don't need to build a bad environmental solution for our residents. Again, I point out, I cannot think of a positive to the 3,000 or more people that And I must agree with the comments earlier that Joe Hauser brought out, that we have, what, eight square miles of land, and quite a number of interchanges with 280 and 85, more than adequate, I believe. And even with all the concentration and concern tonight with the Stevens Creek exit, at the very worst, at the very worst, it's 75% effective. That's pretty good, considering all the other interchanges we've got. And in talking with Bert, we talked about the number of things we can do to Mary, to make it better for the residences. Oh, we can stop traffic flowing off, we can put no turns. Well, how would we get home? Well, you have to drive down the street and make a U-turn. We can put stop signs in for your kids' traffic. We can even put traffic lights in. We can put acoustic walls in, and all these things. These are all called mitigators. And mitigators are Band-Aids over sores. Mitigators detract from the effectiveness of the highway for the intent you're trying to design it for, to flow traffic off, as well as detract from the people who are trying to use it as a residential street. A street cannot serve two purposes. It can only serve the purpose of being a residential street, which it is right now. And if you change it, you're making a mistake. My recommendation to City Council is that you maintain your standards. Your standards for the residences, your standards for your streets, and not be mesmerized to just thinking about traffic problems. It's an overall, citywide problem, and you must maintain standards. And make Caltrans solve their own problems, and they'll think of ways to mitigate this. And if they can't think of ways to mitigate it, we'll live with it. Just as Saratoga says, they'll live with their decision. We're making a decision.[1012.32][1012.32](APPLAUSE). The other comment that I heard yesterday in talking with Bert was that, gee, you'll have 6- to 12 lanes of traffic making so much noise that you won't even hear the traffic 50 feet out your back door.[1030.01][1030.01](LAUGHTER). And I must come back to my first point, and that is, enhance our cultural center, don't detract from it.
Could I get a show of hands, how many more people wish to speak this evening?
One, two, three.
Okay, and I know we have a couple people outside that have indicated a willingness.
Let's see here.
Pardon? Yeah, just the two people who might want to answer. Yes, yes, John, wait.
Hi, I'm Sarah...
Pull that down, there you go.
Hi, I'm Sarah Connell, and I live at 10386 Ensign Avenue. Everyone's saying how they're worried about the kids' safety. I'm worried about the parents' safety. They're going to be, they always take two stoplights to get by the stoplights on Stevens Creek. It'll take much longer if you put these, if you put Mary Avenue through. So they get grouchy when they sit there and wait.[1113.23][1113.23](LAUGHTER). And then they're going to come home and take it out on the kids.[1116.83][1116.83](LAUGHTER). And so I'm not just worried about the parents, I'm worried about the kids at home, the parents, the fathers, and the mothers, and the grandparents. So I'm saying, not just worried about the kids, worried about the parents, and that's about it. So please don't put Mary through, because I want to survive through my 20.[1146.13][1146.13](LAUGHTER).
I would have to say, in being up here about eight years, that has to be the most original argument. You are to be commended, that's great.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Coleman. I live at 10331 Stokes Avenue. I don't think you've heard from anyone on our side of the freeway yet. Let me show you where that is. It's this area right in here.
Up on the hill.
Yeah, right in here. This is known as Somerset Square West.
And whereabouts on Stokes, do you live?
My house is right, the second one on Stokes, facing 85.
Facing 85? Thank you. Backing up to 85, or on the other side of the street?
On the other side.
Thank you.
A lot of people have talked about how they lived in Cupertino for 12 years, or 18 years, or 100 years. I just moved in in April of this year, and I spent a lot of $1988 from my house, and I'm very concerned about this. The short topic that I want to address is the issue of these proposed interchanges in the existing space. I had not heard anything about this project until I received this letter in the mail, which some of the other people have spoken about, June 22nd. I read the letter, it said nothing about our area, and I said, gee, sorry about Mary Avenue, and I threw it in the garbage.[1258.13][1258.13](LAUGHTER). Someone in our neighborhood was out walking, and there, this is a story I heard secondhand, there was a surveyor in the neighborhood, and they asked him what he was doing, and he said he was measuring the property parcels, because there was a possibility of taking out, he said, four to 12 houses for the 85 interchange. I heard about this yesterday, just like, I believe, Mr. Avery said, they hadn't heard about anything until the 6th. And I was very concerned about this. My wife jumped on the phone and started calling up the people that we knew. We've only been there since April, so we didn't know too many people. I also came over and talked with Bert, who, without an appointment, spent over an hour explaining the situation to me. In the short amount of time since then, we got together last night, and about 15 of us canvassed the entire area. There are 156 houses in there. I drafted up a very crude petition, and we got, I believe, in an hour and a half last night, about 240 signatures. That's for 156 houses. And that tells me that everybody in that section is very concerned about any of these proposals. They were sort of glossed over at the beginning of this session, implying that, the way I hear it, because they don't meet the standards, that none of them are possible alternatives. However, they keep raising their, their ugly heads keep raising as the night goes on. And what our petition asks for is that the council at least delay any decisions about any of the options that are discussed in the agenda, until we've also had time to investigate it and try to understand it more, so that we can make comments. We've only had, like I said, one day, just barely one day at this point, to even think about this.
My name is Walt Fortman. I've lived at 10391 Stokes Avenue for about 12 years now. I was one of the folks who went out to circulate petitions last night. We had no idea, other than rumor, that something was coming along that would affect our neighborhood. It was mentioned early on in the evening as one or more of the options that had been studied, and hopefully put to rest. It involved taking out houses along Stokes Avenue. I was a little bit offended when I heard somebody earlier say that he was willing to chip in to buy some of those houses to get rid of them.[1439.51][1439.51](LAUGHTER). I was gladdened shortly thereafter, when somebody said the folks on Mary Avenue and the folks on Stokes Avenue and Somerset Square West are all in this together.[1450.01][1450.01](APPLAUSE). While I was circulating petitions last night, I met only one gentleman who had not signed the petition, because, as he told me, he was in favor of the freeway. Well, I'm in favor of the freeway, too. What I'm opposed to is the destruction of the homes in my neighborhood, the forced relocation of four to 12 neighboring families, and the construction of an elevated freeway on Stokes Avenue. As I circulated petitions last night, the comment I heard from most people was, they're going to do what? They and I are concerned that the city sent out certified letters, returned receipt requested, informing us of an increase in the water pressure in the neighborhood.[1497.51][1497.51](LAUGHTER). There was no notification of a plan to rip out a significant portion of our neighborhood.[1503.13][1503.13](LAUGHTER). We received regular mail letters informing us of a meeting about Highway 85. No mention at all of its impact on Somerset Square, not even in the Cupertino scene. We don't think this is fair. An article in the Mercury News recently referred to "nimby's," people who favor a project as long as it, as the paper defined it.
Not in my backyard.
Project not in my backyard. We are the true nimby's. A lot of us are down here for the first time, but we're here because this project is literally going in our backyards, our front yards, and taking out our houses. Last night, I watched part of the council meeting on television. A mandatory closing time was discussed for a proposed pizza restaurant, along with a review of the noise generated by that restaurant some months after the restaurant opens. The attempt is to minimize the noise arising from the parking lot of that place. We're talking tonight of 24-hour-a-day noise from an elevated freeway, with no hope, at some later date, of closing hours or a reversal of the project if it proves bothersome to The inquiry asking for our neighborhoods is the same consideration as that shown for the neighbors of the restaurant. During another agenda item last night, the aesthetics of cars parked along a public street outside an apartment complex were discussed. Has any thought been given to the aesthetics of a freeway filled with moving cars towering over our residential street? The cost of ripping out a dozen homes and relocating the families is probably $5 or $6 million. Has the city considered how many tennis courts and public swimming pools could be constructed with those millions of dollars? Ours may be a small, compact neighborhood, but we like it. We think it is one of Cupertino's finest. We invite council members to come out and see for themselves what a pleasant place it is in which to live, and to visualize the destruction of the area which would be caused by a proposed off-ramp. We border the present off-ramp, the 280-85 off-ramp. We've learned to live with the noise, the sight of cars and trucks on a surface level and depressed freeway, and the occasional congestion which the off-ramp, where the off-ramp meets Stevens Creek. We sympathize with our friends on Mary Avenue, we share their concerns. However, in Somerset, we in Somerset Square have the additional concern of the physical, as well as the aesthetic destruction of our neighborhood to accommodate an elevated off-ramp. We ask you, the City Council, to keep in mind the residential character of Cupertino, and to not destroy our existing housing stock. We ask you to delay your final decision on an off-ramp, to give adequate disclosure to all options to every home in the impacted areas, and to hold open and well-publicized hearings to discuss these options.
Mr. Mayor...
Yes.
Don't you think it might, well, I would like to, right now, perhaps allay the fears of the people over there at Somerset Square. I don't know that there's any plan to consider putting anything in there, which I think is why you weren't notified of any intent, because there is none.
We certainly hope not, but 40 or 50 of us came down tonight and were a little bit alarmed...
I thought, and I'm sorry that that did not, was not clear to you, when the gentleman from Caltrans, the gentleman from the Traffic Authority, the Public Works Director, and the mayor spoke, to say that because of the problems inherent in those particular solutions that won't work, and it can't work, and so it can't be considered.
I certainly hope it can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Marilyn Valencourt, and I also live on Stokes Avenue. As a matter of fact, my house backs up to Stokes Avenue. Part of the reason that we came tonight was to really find out what was going on. We had all heard rumors, they were very nasty rumors. I would like to encourage you to publicize what's going on with 85, because there will be more issues, I'm sure, such as sound walls, whether the highway will be elevated or depressed, and many more issues that affect us, because they are our backyards. At the same time, I'm also a commuter who very commonly uses northbound 85 to Stevens Creek exit. From what I've heard tonight, in the, a few days ago, I would say, yeah, let's use Mary Avenue, that would be easy. From what I've heard tonight, I can see that that is not an answer, and as a commuter on that road nearly every day, I'm very willing to... on that road nearly every day, I'm very willing to use Foothill Boulevard or Deansa College.[602.91][602.91](Applause). The other thing that I would very strongly hope is that the alternatives that are up here on the wall, as you say, are not viable. And I support the conclusions of what we have heard before. They do not meet safety regulations. Let's not go with any variances. Let's put the safety of our residents first.
Mayor Gatto, members of the council, I'm Roberta Holloman. I live at one-one-one-five-five La Paloma Avenue. I'm probably one of the few people here who doesn't live in the area that's being affected. But I want to speak to you again, as I did at the last hearing, to remember the community at large. At the beginning of the hearing, you asked us to address alternatives, which I will. I can't remember all of them at this point. And the other thing you mentioned was, with each of these alternatives, someone loses. In my opinion, the greatest loss to the largest number of people is the alternative of no freeway. Therefore, I urge you to try to work towards an alternative that will allow you to enter into a freeway agreement so that we can get Highway eighty-five through. At the last hearing, I also said that I would be one who would be willing to drive onto Foothill off-ramp to get home. I can remember the days when Bub Road didn't go through from McClellan to Stevens Creek, and we had to go through Montevista or go down to Stelling to get out of our neighborhood. I'm willing to go back to that sort of thing. But I think you're not concerned with what I'm going to do, but what all the Deansa students are going to do, and the people who go to work on Bub Road. So I urge you to find an alternative that will help those people and try to get Highway eighty-five through.
My name is Lonnie Toensfeld. I live at two-one-six-four-zero Fitzgerald Drive in Somerset Square West. I am very -- have been waiting for eighteen years for the freeway to get through, and so I'm very supportive of seeing it go through, and I'm really not too thrilled with the idea of it being delayed. But what I'm hearing tonight, and one of the things that has disturbed me, is that I find that I have more questions than I have answers. And one of those being a question that I haven't heard anybody address tonight, and that would be the impact of Deansa students on that particular interchange. We have a very, in excess of twenty-five thousand students who attend Deansa College. How many of those come from northbound two-eighty? I don't know. And I don't know whether anybody has that answer, but I think it would be interesting to know how those students who now use the left turn off of the two-eighty would now impact on Deansa Boulevard coming through, which is now already a problem. Something that I'm confused about, maybe somebody can answer, does this mean that we're going to spend money to tear out the cloverleaf that now exists if we put it constructed the way that it's designed at the present time? I mean, it doesn't show on the map out in the lobby. And I'm also concerned when we start talking about things like tearing out houses, about what it's going to cost this community, and quite frankly, I'm not willing, for my tax money, to go to buy my neighbor's house to put in an elevated freeway. Nor am I all that thrilled about the impact on the Mary Avenue and the amount of money that it would cost there.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Robert Owens. I live on Meteor Drive, two houses off of Mary. So I'm very concerned about what goes on here. One thing I would like to get clear in my mind, it's not too clear at this point, was when this interchange was originally designed and construction took place on that portion that's there, I believe it did meet all codes and statutes at the time. Is that correct?
Yeah, one chance. I think it might be important. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay. Basically, that's a question I don't have any answer for. All I know is when we got the design, under present conditions, it does not work. I do not know what the design criteria nor...
I don't think your mic is on. Now you're on. Now it is. Try it now.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. I do not know what design criteria they used when they did the original design. It was done probably in the late fifties and the early sixties, and then built in the seventies. The problem is that it does not work now, and it does not work under the standards that we have developed over the years.
Okay, that's the first question I had. I think it's safe to assume that at the time it did meet the codes and the standards that were in place.
I don't know.
I think it's safe to assume that, though. I, for one, would assume that, safely. Secondly, if it had been built back then, when we're assuming it met the standards and codes, and it was in operation in the seventies, in the eighties, this morning, this afternoon, it would remain, I think it's safe to assume, in operation tomorrow and next year, because there's probably other interchanges in the system that met the standards back then, that after the standards changed, don't meet them today. And I don't think we're going to go around and shut these interchanges down, or build flyways and everything else around them. So I think the alternative that Caltrans has is to get a waiver to their new standards and build the damn thing as it was planned. I mean, that's there.[951.04][951.04](Applause). Thank you.[953.04][953.04](Applause).
Okay, how many more speakers do we have outside now? We'll do about three more.
My name is Harold Hasselberg. I live at one-oh-seven-oh-nine Nathanson Avenue. In fact, I own Mary Avenue.[970.04][970.04](Laughter). Right there.
There you go.
I've been there for nineteen years, and when they dumped that load of dirt behind my house, I was mad when they extended eighty-five. Now they're talking about a ramp. I was told many years ago there would be no overpass unless there was a pedestrian. I only want to know one thing about double standards. I couldn't build my swimming pool away from my house, because my house is on the forty-foot easement for PG&E. You're gonna put a ramp under it? No permanent structure allowed. Am I right? Within forty feet of the center line of that high-power line. Is PG&E gonna move the power line?
That's a detail I have no answer to at this point.
I think Mr. Miviskovich has.
He? Yeah.[1050.04][1050.04](Laughter). State, pardon, state. Yeah. This, we're now, we're now, we're... We don't have an answer at this time, sir. It's a question we don't have an answer to.[1064.54][1064.54](Laughter).
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Bob Myers, two-one-three-two-four Dexter Drive, Cupertino. I lived in my home there in the Somerset Square area for the past twenty years. I think that, as we're looking at the proposal that's brought before the council now, you have a tough issue to wrestle with. You have an issue which is affecting not only our community, but the rest of the city. So you're gonna have to make the right decisions as it affects all of the city. However, I would have to say that my opinion is that the Mary Avenue exit from the freeway is not the right decision. I think (applause) the council has had a policy over the years, and it's been stated, to mitigate the areas, mitigate the traffic measures throughout the community through various ways. As you know, when I sat up there, I was never in favor of closing the streets and shifting impacts from one neighborhood to the other. I'm still not in favor of that. However, I think that what is happening here is if this off-ramp is allowed to go onto Mary Avenue, that you are in fact shifting considerably the impacts to that neighborhood. I think that Bert's memo on a no-access issue specifically points out that the no-access would shift and be contrary to Route eighty-five's purpose, which is to take traffic off to local streets and place it more on city streets, and that, in fact, if we now allowed the off-ramp to take place on Mary, we would in fact be shifting traffic onto local streets.[1185.54][1185.54](Applause). I don't want to prolong any of the things that I say. I do believe, though, that as you look at all of the various alternatives that have been addressed here this evening, that even though there have been some twelve alternatives examined, it would not seem to me that all of them have been examined thoroughly. I don't believe that we're ready yet to abandon the off-ramp, excuse me, abandon the traffic movement from northbound two-eighty onto southbound eighty-five and onto Stevens Creek Boulevard. I think there are some ways that we can look at that yet in the future. However, if it turns out that there is no other alternative to the Mary Avenue, then I would say that the alternative we have left from that is to use the existing designed exits at both Deansa and perhaps at Foothill. Deansa is a collector road, is an industrial, commercial area. It is meant to be used for heavy traffic. The city has taken all sorts of measures to assure that Deansa can carry the traffic, have put in computerized lighting systems. We've tried to shift traffic off of roads like Stelling, like Blaney, onto that major collector road, and we should continue to do so if need be for this, if we cannot come up with a solution. But it does seem to me that this council, this city, should keep with the policies they've established, which is to prevent intrusion into the neighborhood of high-speed traffic, and I'll tell you, it would be high speed coming off of the freeway. I believe the designs are such now, that if you looked at the existing interchange design, the present, very tight turn off of two-eighty onto eighty-five would also probably not be allowed by present standards, and that it's going to slow that traffic down there. If it's not going to work with the weaving that they have now, I'll forecast that that curve off of two-eighty onto existing eighty-five will also provide a very dramatic slowdown to the traffic on two-eighty in the future, and will make that intersection a very difficult intersection to transit through. Each of you know that traffic is very fluid, and the traffic that comes off of any one location, if that location becomes bottlenecked, just like the Mississippi River when it's full, it tries to flow off into all the other areas around it, not like it is today with the drought, but when it is overflowing, that's what happens. So I would urge the council to take diligent thought to examine this situation, to look at additional alternatives in that area. I don't believe that Somerset Square West should be impacted either with a high-rise off-ramp. I think there can be some ways that we'll either live with what we have now, or we'll come up with a design that will work. If that is not possible, then please, no Mary off-ramp for the freeway.
I'll be brief. My name's Tim Highbour. I live in Somerset Square. I knew very little about the issues until I came here tonight. First of all, I'd like to commend the council for giving a good presentation of the alternatives, as well as Caltrans. As a commuter on eighty-five for many, many years, and also as a commuter who used two-eighty north and exited on the cloverleaf on the eighty-five, I think I understand a little bit of some of the traffic. I certainly understand what you're talking about in terms of not enough weave room for two-eighty and eighty-five. However, the thing I have to ask is, I think one alternative that we glossed over a little too quickly is leaving the interchange exactly as it is. And why do I say that? You've said the Caltrans people have analyzed the problem of the weave distance for traffic, and have correctly said that it's not adequate, and the way it is today, I agree. But the thing I can't quite figure out is, once you extend eighty-five, how can you tell how many people from two-eighty are gonna try and weave all the way across, and how many people from eighty-five are gonna try and exit on Stevens Creek? I think once eighty-five goes through, you're gonna find that a lot more of that traffic is gonna go straight through, and the weave problem may not exist. It may still exist, I don't know, but I think certainly with the off-ramps that exist today, I think that's an alternative. Maybe I'll take another look at and try and somehow estimate how severe that weave problem really is gonna be. I have suspicion, maybe it's not that difficult. I'd just ask you to reconsider that. I certainly understand how the people on Mary Avenue feel, and thank you.[1477.66][1477.66](Applause).
How many more are out there? Do you want to speak?
Three.
Three, okay, thank you.
I'm Barbara Jones. I live at one-oh-three-eight-o-Castine Avenue, and like Bob Myers, I've been there ever since the house was new, except for a brief six months on Stokes. So I have some sympathy for the people on Stokes, but I heard what Barbara Rogers said, and I think they're probably doing quite well. I think the people in our area are also doing well. I would like to, not to reiterate what everybody else has to say, but I'd like to talk about my own driving experiences, because I drive between my home in Cupertino and Cambrian Park, about three blocks from one of the exits for eighty-five eventually, at least once a day during the week, and sometimes twice a day. I do this at varying hours of the day, so I've seen the traffic pattern at a lot of different times, during commute and away from commute. When I'm coming home in the afternoon, if it's a reasonable hour, and I define reasonable as anything before four o'clock, I come all the way north and exit onto the eighty-five exit to go into my home from Mary Avenue. If I come home at a later hour, I go off at Deansa and wind my way past the liquor store, past Apple's Famous Street, and cross Greenleaf and into Castine, because it's faster by far than waiting there. In the morning, my choice is very obvious. I go out onto Mary, I turn right, and there I am, right on two-eighty virtually. It's lovely. As I got the information from the petition, I thought, well, this sounds like a very interesting thing. What's this, what's gonna happen to us if they do this with Mary? Because it's one of the possibilities, although I don't like it. And I thought, well, gee, you know, I'll go out onto Stelling. I do that every once in a while anyway. I don't want to go to the bank or the grocery store, no problem. A lot of us can go out. There's three exits if you want to turn right. There's one if you want to turn left, because there's a signal there, which the PTA finally got, how many years later, and which has nothing to do with you, because that was county. But then I looked at, I drove up down the street today for the first time in quite a while. I had not seen the new group of homes, and they don't have the choice that I have. Glenbrook Apartments doesn't have that choice. The Mary Avenue end of Memorial Park and Senior Citizens Center, all of which have been mentioned, and the Deansa group, the very first group mentioned tonight also, has to come onto Mary. There are a lot of us who could go another way. We don't prefer to, perhaps, but we could. But there are a few key groups that don't, and those are the ones that I am definitely concerned with, as far as the Mary Avenue exit is concerned. My observations, as I go on and off of two-eighty every day, are that the northbound exit on two-eighty-five from two-eighty, the one we're talking about turning possibly onto Mary Avenue, is the least used of all the exits at that intersection, by far, at all times of the day. People don't use it in the late afternoon for the same reason that I don't, and the rest of the day, when I'm using it, because it's the same amount of time to my home as Deansa, but a lot less frustration, there's nobody on it then either. So it's not a very well-used one. Well, okay, we're gonna have more people, and we're gonna have more population in California, and this is all gonna change. However, that exit basically leads to the foot of Foothills, an area that is not going to be heavily built up. So what I'm saying to you is, yes, I have a choice tonight. I'm not an engineer. I can be brash and say, yeah, I know what I want. I very much like what Mr. Hensley has suggested this evening, as far as how to deal with the weave problems and all of that, with the rest of it, and then I personally would prefer to do without that northbound exit from two-eighty onto southbound two-eighty-five on a permanent basis.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to respond for your request for alternatives. There is an alternative that meets the interests of all the neighbors that have been expressed...
Name an address, please.
Dick Weaver on two-one-four-two-six Rumford.
Is there a... Is there a pointer?
Yes, right.
There's a, what, you're gonna rip that one out of the wall? There's a hand mic over there on the...
There's another mic above the gentleman.[1745.04][1745.04](Laughter).
There you go.
What I've understood the Caltrans objection to be is the merge distance to exit at this exit. Let us suppose first that there is no concrete barrier, so you can merge, and that there is no exit. Measure the merge weave distance from wherever you want until you have enough distance, then turn right onto Bub Road.[1772.04][1772.04](Applause). That's also consistent with the mayor's observation as to where the traffic is headed. As to the southbound entrances, there are two choices. A typical choice would be to have the southbound entrance parallel this exit, or if the exit is close enough to Stevens Creek, to bridge it from Stevens Creek in a more normal approach. Thank you.[1796.31][1796.31](Applause).
You have to go through the buildings.
I'm Carol McDowell. I live at 10422 Noel Avenue. I realize that before you tonight is a very difficult decision. As a citizen who has lived here since 1969, and I bought my house on Noel Avenue out of the sales office over in Somerset One, I believe it was on Lubbock Street if you drove straight in. I was promised Mary Avenue, Mary Avenue overpass. The street was built and designed to be a major artery for two-way traffic going across the 280 freeway over into Sunnyvale. Because seven homeowners, and that's all there were, gathered together with some people from Sunnyvale and whatever, a former city council supported their not wanting to have the overpass so people wouldn't look down in the yards. Well, if you drive down there today, the trees are so big you couldn't look in the yard if you wanted to, you know, even with some spy glasses. That was a foolish mistake on the part of those seven individuals and those other people from Sunnyvale because that's a direct artery right into Deansa College, Memorial Park, Homestead High School. Several years after that incident happened, there was people that lived over on the other side of Stelling in the old, what is called the Old Garden Gate area, were having terrible trouble getting their kids to and from school. There were no crossing guards. They were not within busing distance. There were a meeting after meeting after meeting to attempt to get a cross, a red, green, yellow light with a walking thing there. I don't know when it went in. It was long after my kids left Garden Gate School. But when those meetings were held, the majority of the people who attended and supported the Garden Gate people on the other side of Stelling were people from this side now of the freeway. When the freeway was finally going to be built, an extension to give direct access, so we were told at the time, from Foothill College to Deansa College because the new fine, what do we call that thing? Foot Center was being built. They had to have good access. That's why we had to do the extension. And we'll worry about the extensions way on down the line. Another, again, a group of people from Somerset West came to the city of Cupertino and said, look, is there something we can do about at least getting an overpass, a walking overpass over 280, over towards Homestead? They said, yeah, we could probably manage that. Dialogue began between the Cupertino School District, the city, the state, and the Fremont Union High School District. The reason we don't have an overpass, a walking overpass, and the reason why these kids are going to Montavista and Kennedy is because the Fremont Board would not allocate one quarter of their share of the money of building the overpass. And the Cupertino School Districts that will allocate the money very happily because we will pay for that and not having to bus kids in five years' time. Now, what we've dealt with here is a whole lot of very bad inconsistent planning. And what we have here are a group of people who in only two days' time made the fastest T-shirt deal in the city I've ever seen.[856.75][856.75][laughter] And I'm pretty good at making fast deals, as you all know. What we need to do is be a community, and that's not. Just look at our own naval. We're going to have a, we have one way in and one way out in Somerset West. That's it. One way in, one way out. I've listened to how many cars can get out onto Stevens Creek? We've had the same problem. We explained it to Bert one night and he fixed it up good. Now we get out lots of cars, Bert. Anyway, solutions to problems can come about. And what we do need for that west end of town is that, is some exit somewhere. I don't think we should have to be deprived of either going to Stelling or going to Foothill any longer. I mean, at least the freeway exit has been a help. And I'm sure there's a lot of people in this room use that exit constantly. What we're saying is, we don't want it in our backyard. I have watched the people on Bub Road, on Foothill, on McClellan, on Stelling, going south, on Blaney, on Miller. They've all taken their lumps all over this town. And what we have to do is mitigate this traffic problem in some way in this community. And everybody take their lumps as a community and share it. There is no reason why one little pocket ought not to have to have to have it. I don't know how you're going to resolve it. I feel sorry for you. But I hope that you will keep this in the back of your mind when you're making your deliberations. We need to function. If we would have functioned as a whole community, we'd have liked for Garden Gate School a long time ago. We might even have a footbridge across at 280. These kids wouldn't have to go to Homestead or to Montavista. And, well, whatever. I remember there was a time when you didn't. So we need to function, and that's your job. We all elected you. People from over on Wolf Road elected you. Down in San Jose, they elected you. And it's just not this little group sitting here. Thank you.
Thanks, Colonel.[1017.44][1017.44][applause] Okay, is there, was that the end of the speakers? Okay. Okay. Thank you for the courtesy and listening to everybody. Yes, ma'am. You can be the last speaker then.[1035.33][1035.33][laughter]
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Anna Black, and I live on Gardena Drive. I've been living in Cupertino for 16 years. It seems that the city council is not always in tune with the people it represents. As I was mentioning before, many of us were not informed about the proposed project, nor about this public hearing scheduled for tonight. The Cupertino Seans Agenda Preview mentions only July 6, public hearing regarding Highway 85. No mention at all about the South Mary exit to 280. We all have a legitimate concern about the South Mary exit proposal. It will have a tremendous environmental and traffic impact on our neighborhood. Gardena Drive and adjacent streets are now already, more or less, used as a thoroughfare between Stelling and South Mary. Having an exit to 280 will be disastrous. Many families with a lot of young children attending the Garden Gate School live in these neighborhoods. Could you picture these children going to school in the morning while commuters are rushing to work, taking the shortcut from 280 South Mary exit through these neighborhoods to get to Stelling, Valley Green, and Greenleaf Drive to all of the Apple Computer Buildings and vice versa? People will not be very safe in these streets any longer. Then there are our senior citizens we should concern about. Presently, they are able to take the more quiet streets of our neighborhood to get to the senior center on South Mary. I'm one of them. I use my bike to the tennis courts. That would be impossible if the streets are used for thoroughfares, as mentioned above. We have already more than enough air and noise pollution from 280. Do we have to add to that? Has a traffic and environmental analysis been written by an unbiased professional such as has been done by Professor Harvey about the Western proposal in Menlo Park? We hope you have done so, and we hope you will consider not to use on South Mary exit.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council at this point for discussion on the issues of the overpasses or the exiting at Stevens Creek. But I think it's important that before we start the deliberations that I talk a little bit about the process because we've had some discussions here about notification, about information that's out and whatnot. The Highway 85 extension and all of the ramifications of the Highway 85 extension have been public knowledge for probably the last four or five years. There have been a number of public hearings over this whole issue. The issue we're talking about tonight, the elimination of this access, was a new issue that arose somewhere around February or March of this year. The purpose of this hearing is to get as much of this new information out to the public as soon as possible. We have not formulated any specific proposals. We have not formulated any concrete designs for anything. What we're trying to do now is determine a direction. And too often governments accuse of having things cast in concrete before the public is notified. What we're trying to do at this point is get information out early. We've had input now. The council hopefully will take this input and provide a direction. Whichever way the direction goes, then the concrete information will flow from that. We are not coming to specifics this evening. And I just want to make that point so we don't go thinking that we have missed a beat somewhere along here.
In other words, for the sake of discussion, if we decided we wanted to look more at Mary Avenue, then we would have all the information forthcoming, all the detailed traffic analyses, all the possible mitigation measures, all the possible safety measures that could be undertaken and so forth, all the landscaping things and so forth and so on. Tonight is just to decide if we want to continue it to that point or if we don't. And we're getting information from you all to help us decide that.
Okay. Does anybody want to begin on this?
Yeah, I guess. I think more than anything else possibly to share some of my thoughts on this and perhaps responses to a couple of issues that were raised and also perhaps to share with you questions in my own mind. I know I had one conversation with Mr. Goldman, I guess it was a week ago, and I told him very much that I was, I felt I was like between that rock and the hard place and that before I made any final decision, I wanted as much information as possible. Information not only from Caltrans, from the engineers, but information from the residents and their feelings. I've received some tonight. We've received written communication, and I guess I would just share some of the questions in my mind and perhaps at times I saw even little conflicts here with even the Mary people presenting their position. One of the concerns raised was that traffic would filter through coming off Mary and go down through Greenleaf and exit onto Stelling. Yet another speaker said, we can only go out onto Mary because Stelling's a mess. And one thing I've learned up here on the council, and I agree with some of the speakers who said, traffic is fluid. If traffic is a mess on Stelling, I don't think you're going to have to worry too much about traffic filtering down off Mary into the neighborhood and towards Stelling. They're going to avoid that because it's jammed up already. One thing, however, I think you have to be concerned with is that if access is blocked off of northbound 280 to, on 285 or to Stevens Creek, you're going to have, as was said, about 6,000 cars that have to go someplace. Now, let's split them up evenly and say 3,000 get off at Foothill and 3,000 get off at Deansa. There's 3,000 more cars going onto Deansa, which is, yes, designed to accommodate quite a flow of traffic, but it is still heavy. And as I believe Barbara Jones says, as she gets off there, it makes it very easy, take the right turn at the liquor store, head up there, across there and across Greenleaf, and that you may have traffic drawn into your neighborhood trying to avoid the jam up on Deansa because there are more cars there. And I said, I'm sharing concerns I have in my own mind. I don't have the answers to these, but things to be thought about. One thing, just I think a little matter, I sometimes like to put things in a perspective. I know the mention was made. We have all these exits, and big communities only have four exits, and we have 11 or 12. Well, I think putting it into a better perspective, first of all, we're dealing with two freeways, and right now there is only one exit off of 85, and that is at Stevens Creek. And when you talk about how many exits in a community, that's going in a particular direction. If you go back the other way, you'd probably get the same number. So really what it comes down to is, on 280, we do have three northbound exits, Wolf, Deansa and Foothill, and three southbound exits, Foothill, Deansa and Wolf. So just, I like to, I don't think we have any more exits than others. We happen to be at the intersection of what will hopefully be two freeways, and so, yes, that generates something. I can't help but respond to Mr. Avery a bit where he spoke about the design, his father working on that. I think also if you check with Dad, that when he built that, he knew there was a possibility that Mary Avenue would come through and that street was designed that way. And it was only later, as Mrs. McDowell made reference to, it was determined not to bring it across. One thing I would throw out for consideration to the residents and the like, if you close off that access, you are putting those extra cars out on those other streets. What about the possibility then to relieve those streets to keep them from filtering through, that you open up Mary Avenue to come through from Sunnyvale as originally intended? It won't be freeway traffic. We'll pull some of that off in the other so they don't filter through the neighborhoods. I don't know if that's an answer, but it's a thing to be considered. Let's see. Then I guess the other thing is, and mention was made, I love the gentleman who quoted from the Declaration of Independence because I do a lot of quoting from historical documents up here since I teach that. And I agree with him. Consent of the governed, and we are elected to represent all the people in the community. And the question I have to live with too is, how do I answer the people who live off of Bub and McClellan and those other streets if you say to them, we are going to cut off the access you now have and have it, you're going to have to go by way of Foothill? And we've heard from the people up on Upper McClellan who are already complaining, there are so many people coming off Foothill down through McClellan. We've heard about the people on Lower McClellan who are complaining about the people coming off Deansa. How do I, how do I respond to those people and answer to them? So I guess I'm really not coming up with any solutions. I'm sharing some questions that I have, and I have your concerns at hand too. And I think Mr. Myers, he has sat up here and he knows it's a difficult decision, and we're going to try and do the best we can. But those are some of the unanswered questions. And I guess my own feeling right now is coming to some sort of conclusion. Until I have more details on it, I am not willing to make a decision either way to say, yes, we go with it or we don't go with it at all. I think more things have to be examined, and there may be that alternative out there that simply just hasn't appeared yet. So those are some of my general comments right now.
Barbara, you want to do anything?
No.
Hmm?
No.
Does anybody else want to go next?
No, I think at this point all I could do would be to echo what Mr. Plunge says. I mean, I think everybody that has spoken this evening has made some valid points, and many of which we agree with, and almost all of them we have heard before when it comes to concerns about traffic on their neighborhood streets. It's something that we've been grappling with every single month that we've been on the council. I think tonight has to be the beginning of the process where we evaluate the alternatives. I also don't have the answer tonight. I also don't want to exclude any of the alternatives. And I would like to somehow feel comfortable that when we say we want to continue to evaluate alternatives that somehow we can provide a force that can come up with further creativity or further approaches to the problem. We have to find a solution that works for all Cupertino, not just for the residents in any one particular area. It's hopefully if we can come to a win-win solution or situation. I think at this point tonight, we've heard input, and I think that we need to continue along the process. But I agree, I don't think we can come to any conclusion this evening.
I've been here 10 years. I got involved in city government because I was concerned about a project. I got involved in city government because I was concerned about a project over where I live that I thought would impact our neighborhood adversely. And so along with a lot of neighbors, I protested that and I was pleased that the city listened. They didn't do everything we wanted, but we made a bit of a difference and that was kind of a shock because I grew up back east. I have seen, as was mentioned by someone, the traffic get worse on Blaney Avenue and bike lanes put in where they didn't want them and the street made a collector, a minor collector, when they didn't want that. I've seen what's happened on Stelling, how we tried to mitigate the problems there and we made it better in some respects for some people and worse for others. And here again, we're faced with the same problem. It's the overall question of access, what's best for the city as a whole? What can we do that will be the best for the most and try to not hurt anyone badly? I don't know if we can do that. Phil just said, "We have to come to something that's best for everybody." It's my observation, you can't always do that. It would be nice if we could, but I don't think the world always works that way, at least that's my experience. I would agree that we don't have enough information tonight. I think there are real problems concerned with using Mary Avenue as an off-ramp, in effect, or an exit from the freeway. But I think before we say that therefore not having that and therefore not having any exit northbound 280 to Stevens Creek, we need to be very sure that indeed it's not something that is capable of solution. And I would like to investigate that a little bit further and if, and it may very well be that the evidence will show that it isn't the thing to do. I think tonight, I heard a lot of people speak very sincerely and in a very concerned way. And you've done a lot of homework and gotten together and organized cohesive group in a very short time and I commend you for your efforts. You've made a difference here tonight. If there had been any thought of our saying, "Yes, we're going to go with it," certain, and that was not in my mind, I can't speak for anybody else's, but if there were any idea of that, certainly it no longer is. And as I say, I don't know for sure about anybody else, but I think I would like to see a more detailed analysis of what the problems are and whether they're capable of being solved. And I'd like to see in that effort, some of the people here represented to work in conjunction with the staff on that. When each of us was briefed by Caltrans and the Traffic Authority on these lower options that they said wouldn't work because of the weaving and the distance problems, I kept saying, "No, no, you couldn't have looked at everything. Have you looked at this?" And then they'd show me, "Yes, they'd looked at that." And then I'd think some more and then I'd call Bert the next day and I said, "But what about this?" And I believe they truly have looked at everything they could think of. And it may be that there are traffic engineers or somebody who with a brilliant flash of insight, maybe that's how inventions happen sometimes, does have a solution. I don't know, I would hope so, that would work better than Mary. But at this point, I would like to have the feeling after the decision is made, that it's been looked at in cold blood with a good analysis, with all the pros and cons laid out, and yes, it works or no, it doesn't, and then live with it. And that's how I feel.
Okay. I represent, well, I shouldn't say I represent, I am from the west part of Cupertino. I'm one that would be getting off at Deansah Boulevard and going over and going up McCone Road to get home, or getting off at Foothill and going down McCone. That is a residential street also and it's not nearly as wide as Mary and so we would be impacting those people further. When I got involved in this community was when Seven Springs was proposed, which was eight years ago. We were trying to delay that development until 85 is in, and as you can see, 85 is not here. I sympathize with you folks and I think that there is some, hopefully some workable solution that would not greatly impact you. I don't see that we've got that tonight, so I certainly am not ready to make a decision at this point, either way.
I have one question, unless you want to make your remarks first.
Well, you want me to do that?
Thank you.
Okay. I have a little different opinion. First off, let me say that I have been a very avid supporter of Highway 85. I think that Highway 85 is a very vital, necessary transportation artery through this community. I see it as relieving a lot of the surface traffic that we have on the streets, particularly on the west side, for the commuters that are now going through our town. And when this whole issue of where I thought we had a very satisfactory solution and we were proceeding very nicely on realizing Highway 85, Measure A had been passed and it appeared that we were finally going to see Highway 85 constructed, I was, devastated is the wrong word, but I was very disappointed in February when this whole information came out and have been searching very diligently to try and find a solution. And I feel that Caltrans and the Traffic Authority have worked very, very hard and have really examined to beyond just the normal effort to find an off-ramp at, to replace the, or to be able to get off from 280 to Stevens Creek. When the Mary Avenue suggestion was first put forward, I felt it was such a drastic change from what anybody had been expecting, that I was one of the people that suggested this meeting to be held at an early date so the public could be aware of it. Because it is a tremendous change from anything that this community has anticipated or has even expected in the past. When you look at the Mary Avenue area, the Mary Avenue at one point did project to go over Sunnyvale, but that didn't happen. And now the community has had many years of the peace and the quiet that not having that overpass has provided. So what happens is you set up patterns, you set up lifestyles, you set up a community. And I think that some of the people that spoke early about the Mary Avenue area depicted it very properly. And I think some of the assets that exist in there and the lifestyle that exists in there were very properly depicted. Bottom line is, I think that the Mary Avenue overpass is a bad idea. I for one would be willing to eliminate it as an alternative at this very moment. I think that we can still look within the existing right-of-way to try and find a way to get off from San Jose to Stevens Creek. But if we can't, my solution would be to go back to alternative number one, which would be have no access at that point. One of the things that I have and I know the council has strongly supported has been an elimination of intrusion of commuter traffic in neighborhoods. We've worked very hard and perhaps some people have been inconvenienced with closures of streets and having to move cars around, but I can tell you that talking to people who live in those neighborhoods, that they're not inconvenienced, they appreciate the return to some degree of more normalcy to that area. What I see happening, if we don't have the movement to Stevens Creek, which I would love to have, and I think we might still find a solution to do that, is the traffic ends up on arterials. That's the place for traffic to be.
I have two questions that have to do with timing. One of the reasons for a need to make a decision as soon as we can, I suppose, is a concern that we not tie up the schedule on 85. What, and certainly we've waited for all these many years and like many of you, I've worked for it and surely wouldn't like to see it delayed forever again. But when must we make a decision on this to the point that it won't, what's the dead date? The due date at which point it starts slowing up?
Decision on which part, Barbara?
Well, basically the freeway agreement and this is part of it.
You want to speak to that one?
Will Kempson with the Traffic Authority. I think that the, in terms of a drop dead date for construction, you probably have some cushion in terms of time. As you know, you've already given us permission to proceed with Stevens Creek overcrossing. For that, we're grateful and the construction is already underway there. We don't have any, I think we only have a single remaining parcel of right-of-way in the city of Cupertino. If we can work out something with respect to that parcel and the ability to proceed there, that keeps us on schedule, the drop dead date for right-of-way is this month. With regard to further construction, our intention would be to do the structures work first at Stelling, at McClellan, and if we can, proceed at Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road. Those are the next points where we have a concern. We're looking at several months before we would have to deal with that issue.
And my other question is, as I understand it, because the Mary Avenue option would involve acquiring some school land, that it is an option because of some law, that we can't consider that until all other options have been considered? Is that correct?
Well, the issue there is, that you're talking about is part of federal law called Section 4F of National Environmental Policy Act, which reflects, which involves recreational land and Homestead High School is impacted and that's a study that we would have to go through. The federal government, the Federal Highway Administration and the U.S. Secretary of Transportation will not likely approve a taking of recreational land and an alternative that involves that unless they are convinced that there are no other reasonable alternatives.
Okay. And then of course, assuming we did study the Mary Avenue option further, then if we even did decide that that was the way to go, there would still be 18 to 30 months until we had final approvals from everybody from whom it's necessary to get approvals and that's not even necessarily a certainty.
That's correct. Caltrans has estimated that it would be about two years to obtain the necessary approvals and so therefore to delay a decision on the freeway until that point came about, you still would not necessarily be guaranteed a positive decision and you would have delayed project work on the mainline freeway waiting for that.
I'm talking myself into things, aren't I?
Any further?
That's it, thanks.
Okay. Will, I have a question for you on, one of the problems with the weaving and blending in there is the amount of traffic too. And one of the things, I know this was raised when we met with you, was that the southbound 280, where there is now, I believe, well, it's going to be widened to allow for more traffic to come off 280 onto 85. Is that a requirement for Caltrans or can we just hold it down and bring in, you know, one less lane? In other words, it may slow them down on 280, but it brings in one less lane and then allows for the merging to take place from the northbound, northbound 280?
The, what we've got there is we need two lanes on the ramp to go from 280, from southbound 280 to southbound 85 to handle the traffic. There's about 2,000 cars in the peak hour that will be making that movement. That's more than one lane can handle. The additional lane in there, the third lane, is because we have that slip ramp that takes the 85 traffic over to allow them to get off at Stevens Creek, which pushes that volume up to around 2,800 cars. So that additional lane beyond the two is needed there to handle the traffic. Otherwise, the traffic coming from 85 will back up on the 85 ramp and also back up on the 280 ramp. And if that's backed up, that means that no one can weave across from the Stevens Creek, excuse me, from the northbound 280 to Stevens Creek movement.
Okay. I guess I, you know, I've seen some of it, but I still think somewhere in there. The one thing I guess I am very certain on, I said I had some question in my mind, I do not want us going in and taking anyone's front yard, backyard or whole house. I would be totally opposed to that. I have--
So that speaks to staying within the right-of-way.
Staying within the right-of-way, yeah. I'm not in favor of doing that.
Yeah. I know, I still get the feeling that some of our energies are better spent maybe in dealing with some of these standards that seem to be precluding some of the options than spending 30 months trying to get the federal government to approve a Mary Avenue overpassing.
I would agree with you, John. I know during the private session we had when we were briefed by Caltrans, I raised a question, I said, "What's wrong with weaving? You do it as you come, what is it, 880, just as you approach 101 coming from Milpitas." They just got a sign there saying, "Go to it," in effect, you know, "Find your way." And I said, "Why can't we do the same thing?" Well, that's where I was informed that when they built it that way, it was okay. Today, different standards, it's not okay. And that's one of the things, but I don't know, perhaps Caltrans can answer, do they give variances to some of their standards? I mean, that question was raised.
Basically, the weaving distance we would be looking, weaving distance we would be looking for here is around 1,600 to 2,000 feet. We're looking at 750, it's not even close to ask for an exception. Normally if we get around 1,500 or so, then we can consider exception, but it's not even in the range of consideration.
The gentleman that spoke earlier that said, you know, what had happened if we'd have built it in 1972 or whenever it was, knowing it was possibly to be built, it would have been built to those, to that configuration, would it not have?
I would assume so. And that's a difficult question to answer because when I came on this project, the engineers I had working for me explained exactly the problem that I outlined here. And basically, we built a lot of stuff in the 50s and 60s that doesn't meet the standards today and we're spending an awful lot of money going out and trying to repair them now. In fact, over in the East Bay, we finally closed off our first ramp because it couldn't handle safety, couldn't handle the traffic safely. And this may be a coming thing where we will be closing off those ramps.
Wonderful.
And if it doesn't meet today's standards, we won't build it.
Okay. Okay, so--
Well, we're all still looking for the best solution.
Apparently there's not a consensus here.
For the magic--
Nobody--
Solution from heaven.
Has got an alternative yet that works. I mean, although it sounds like, I mean, there's a desire or a wish at least to try and find a solution within the existing right-of-way. I mean, that's, everybody would be happiest with that, if that's possible. The question then becomes, how can we provide some focus or some effort in that area? What's the best method?
Back to the drawing board. There has been an offer from some of the people in the community, again, and I know Caltrans and Traffic Authority, you've met with people in other communities and those inputs and maybe somewhere out there, I think Barbara, you said, maybe that's how inventions come along, someone, someplace, all of a sudden gets that inspiration and has it there. And it would be, I would be in favor of, and I think staff had one of their recommendations on this particular one, that we continue to evaluate those alternatives for access to Stevens Creek Boulevard from northbound Route 280 and see, you know, what can be done with primary emphasis on staying within the right-of-way and meet with some of the community. I could live with that.
Well, yeah, I think that's always the preferred solution would be to find that magical way to do within the right-of-way. But like I said earlier, I think that that effort has been made and if we find that, it's going to be a little bit of a real gift at this point. So I think we have to deal a little more with reality and look at the options we have before us, given that reality and, well, you know, either say yes or no to Mary as one of the alternatives.
Well, I think at this point, I would like to, and again, in gathering the information, to get more information on the Mary alternative as well. Primary emphasis on the other. As I said before, I'm not ready to rule out either one and there may be some very good reasons that once I get that information, we'll rule it out. I think a case has to be made-- I think a case has to be made for the entire community, and I know we try and protect the neighborhoods, but I'm thinking of impacts on some of the other neighborhoods by the people being forced. For example, anyone coming from San Jose who lives in the Somerset section now is going to have to go a different way. The people who live off of Mary are going to have to come in a different way. They may have been coming off, right off at Stevens Creek, left on Mary and back into the neighborhood. Now they'll have to filter through that neighborhood. So I want to take a look at more of those things before I make a decision.
Can we have some specific requests for staff, then, to come, for information that we want to see?
One, I would like to see something on if it were to be, first of all, take, again, taking the primary emphasis if there's something within the right-of-way, but now moving toward Mary Avenue. What would it be designed like? What would be coming down there? I may take one look at it and say, "Forget it, no way, shape, or form." I think many times, and all of us, I heard people saying tonight, we hear these rumors, we hear about these things, it's dealing with that unknown. What is the projected known, at least we can react to that? So what would be the design coming down? You know, what's going to happen to the people on the west side of Mary as you bring it down, including our service yard? You know, all those things. You know, what type of protections would be necessary? I'd need information on that.
So what you're saying is really identify the issues and try to work some mitigation measures on it and to test those and see what you think of them?
And because different people think differently or respond differently, not only the written statement and the graphs and the charts and the formulae, but maybe also a rendering showing how it would look. Can you -- it wouldn't have to be too beautiful--
We'd love to do it.
-- as far as drawings are concerned.
I've got some of those up there now.
Something like what's up there now. Of course, not that, because that just is a perspective, but showing how the roadway would actually look at, say, an intersection and during a, during, in a straight stretch. And as John says, maybe one look is all we need.
And I think, I think one of the things, Bert, you've listened to the, you've listened to the comments here tonight and many of the concerns raised. How would some of those concerns be addressed? And there may be no way to address them safely, and so then we say, "That's out." But at least then we can say, I guess what I'm coming to here, too, is not only do I answer to you, but I answer to the people in the other parts of the community, and I can say to them very openly, "Look, I looked at that, and that was not safe for those people, and it's been shown, and that's it. And I think it's better for you, because then it comes out. If we haven't done that, and they say, 'Oh, all you did was listen to that neighborhood,' now here we come in again." We can say, "We honestly looked at all this, and that's it, and it's not going to work, so that's why we have to go with something else." So that's the type of information, with the concerns that have been raised, how we would answer those.
And I'm wondering roughly how long that would take so that we would be able to estimate when it would be available to everyone, how we would get that information out, that kind of thing, too.
Okay. I think the issues are pretty well-known, and we'd probably try to list as many as we could. I guess the real question is how fast the authority could react in trying to prepare the renderings and some of the sketches that you'd want to see, how the intersections would look. If we put median on Mary Avenue to try to separate that one lane coming down, how that would look, how the intersection would be controlled.
Is Mary Avenue there, does that become, is that still our street?
It'd be ours as soon as the ramp actually hit the surface, and from then on, it'd be a local roadway that we would maintain.
Okay, so that it would be how we constructed it?
That's right. Well, as to who pays for the construction and so forth, that's something that you'd probably want to negotiate, but at least we'd have some ideas as to what the--
The design would be--
The design of Mary Avenue would be and what if some of the--
Whose?
Whose design would be?
Yes.
I think it'd be the city's prerogative as to how they want to design Mary Avenue. It would be your approval.
Is that right?
It's a local street.
Local street.
I think Bert has accurately described the delineation in boundaries and jurisdictions in terms of costs and what was done. That is something that would need to be negotiated.
Okay, so that it would be a local decision?
Mm-hmm, correct.
On Mary?
Right.
On Mary. Well, actually, the overpass, too, to some degree.
Yeah. But I'm really concerned about Mary Avenue itself. So how long do you think?
I think the authority would be willing to make our consultants available, as we've done in the past. We would be as responsive as we can be to get the information to you. I would think potentially a period of maybe 60 days to put together a complete report of the type that I think I hear you asking for.
I guess some of my concerns, I don't know if it's that much with the design of that coming over. It's what happens after that hits, the road hits Mary Avenue. That's what I'm concerned with.
That's right.
Because I think we have a general idea of what a flyover would be, but I'm more concerned from our own city standpoint, what it means to our residents. And I heard someone out there, you know, how do people come out of their, what exit are they going to have from the one on Casa de Anza? Things like that, those driveways.
Driveways and other streets.
Yeah. How is that handled? And if we can look at it and say, "That's not," you know, it may say from an engineering standpoint, "Look, all right," but I look at it and say, "No way, aesthetically, safety, as far as I'm concerned, residents," then we're through with it.
I need to bring out one thing, and I guess it's important in a sense, is when we make some comparison to other arterios and other collectors that we have residents actually fronting on it with driveways and exits and so forth, do you want to try to make some comparison? Because it's very difficult to try to only deal with an isolated case, Mary Avenue, and say, "Well, it's going to be difficult to get out of Casa de Anza. It's going to be difficult to get out of Lubbock." But if we go out to McClellan's and the Stellings, we could also say that it's very difficult for individuals to drive out of their driveways to try to get in the traffic that's much larger. How do you want to deal the, what would you say, the--
Please, please, please.
The level of that difficulty? Is it just a matter of identifying that that's an access point and the volumes and try to determine that that's no worse or better than other areas? How would you want to make an evaluation of that?
I guess I would just, what I'm looking for right now in my own mind, and the others may be different here, I'm looking for just the design, how that's going to be handled.
Okay.
Like that, you know, difficulty of access versus someone who lives on the two-lane, you know, McClellan or something like that. And that's, I guess, that would be so, the only word that comes to mind, ethereal, you know, speculative, the degree of difficulty of getting out. I want to be able to face the person who is handling that traffic on Blaney and Stelling and McClellan--
That's right.
--and say, "Hey, we didn't accept that on Mary because there were certain rea-- it just wouldn't work out." Because otherwise, they're liable to say, "Hey, why don't you do the same first word?" So just show the design, is for my way of thinking, what's happening.
Do you need input from?
No, I think what we'd like to get help from the authority is for the renderings and the sketches, if you want that. If it's just technical information, city staff can provide that.
Yeah, and you could do a simple rendering, can't you?
Well, we'd have to hire someone. We have the ability there to maybe assist us in this process.
A rendering such as this, not that much in how it will look. I want to see as if I'm looking above--
Geometric--
--and what, something going down the middle of the street and we're--
Fairly basic, I mean--
Yeah, fairly basic, so I don't need--
I don't think we want to spend--
Yeah.
--hundreds of hours or dollars on--
Yeah.
Plants and stuff like that, but just indicators.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to, you want to look at any of their alternatives? Any other issues on alternatives?
Well, I think we should continue to explore the, within the right-of-way, whatever we could do to do that. You know, you had a couple of alternatives just last week that didn't fly, and I'm sure all of us can sit down and come up with more. Just maybe make that effort even internally and package them up. We know enough of the criteria now, we could probably get real close before we had to involve them. And if any of the citizens want to volunteer their services and efforts to participate in some kind of a task force, I think that would be more than welcome.
I think the concern I have is that we don't get caught short if we come down to a, come down to an alternative of no access. And then we have to think in terms of what impact it has on the local streets. And I think we've passed by that a little quickly tonight, and it may be that we have to make certain mitigation measures there to maintain that level of service we now have in case we do have to go to that access. I don't know what those mitigation measures would be, but I would be concerned that we didn't explore that possibility, too, in case you do decide to go to no access.
Okay, well, then you just--
I don't know when you want to do it, but I just want to bring it out at this point.
Well, we have, in the report tonight, we have some information on impacts on the other streets.
Right.
And unless we, and on these numbers are wrong, it appears that those streets will stay within the carrying capacity of the streets to carry that traffic.
Well, one goes down to E-minus, or E-plus.
If I can explain that--
Yeah, there's an E-plus and D-minus.
Yeah, the intent of that was to show that there was going to be a increase in delay, which shows that the levels of services are going to decrease for today's traffic. I think the caution here must be made that when you look at full build-out to 1990, if we're trying to do that, you're, if we're almost there now with 1988 full build-out, we're going to lower some levels of services. You just can't throw 500 vehicles on De Anza Boulevard and hope that it will take that traffic, or Stevens Creek Boulevard. There's going to be an impact. And Futo Boulevard, and I think council members have mentioned that you're going to filter into other streets, and if we start really looking at the direction of that traffic, there's going to be impacts on McClellan, impacts on Stellings, and so forth, and so forth.
Well, then perhaps your report should include as much detailed information on all of those points.
Okay.
Number comparisons. Okay, so you're figuring what, a couple of months?
This is the in-house one, yeah.
Yeah, the in-house, I, 45 days, probably, we can get this information.
Well, it's--
First meeting in September, probably.
First meeting in September would be September 5th. We don't have an August scene, so it would have to be through the newspaper, cable, TV, whatever. Mailings, of course, you all know the price of postage these days.
We can, we could mail, I suppose we've got the listing now.
Yeah.
We could mail same area. The other concern I have, though, is that we've specifically targeted these areas. In some way or another, we need to notify--
The whole city.
--the whole community--
That's right.
--if we, especially if we talk about the other approach.
Well, I think maybe what you need to do is package the report, get information out of the character generator, or even now in the July scenes, indicate that that's going to be available in August, and allow for at least 10 days to two weeks so the community can pick it up, look at it, assimilate it, and then have the meeting.
Well, I would recommend then that we kind of, I know we need to want to proceed post haste, but I would recommend that we give ourselves plenty of time so that we can get this information out, so that people feel like they've had an opportunity to review these things and so forth.
What about then having the report ready by the 1st of September with the September scene noting that the meeting to discuss it will be the second meeting in September?
Good, good.
First of all, you've got a good layer of people right here, the words going--
I think that'd work better.
I mean, for that one area.
And the package would be available at City Hall or whatever.
Yeah, I think that'd be better. Give us a little more time.
So that would give about, about two weeks, so that would be--
And I expect there are probably people in the audience who have suggestions, and maybe for those finite suggestions, we can just take them up, you could call them into City Hall or something. I think we're just giving general direction tonight, and we certainly wouldn't want to omit anybody's driveway or whatever. But I think we're looking very, just what we want to try and do here, at least, that's the way I feel.
Okay. That's it on that. All right, so that takes care of that part, Patricia.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just suggest, we've said that the--
Can you come up?
Yes. You said the report would be ready by September 1st, and then the hearing would be September, the second week--
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
That would be on September 19th.
Yeah. That gives your people two months to prepare. It then gives us two weeks to, for the community people, to either look at alternatives or--
And that's all we get, too.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is that if, this is the situation we've been through just now, that for us to get information and be able to respond to it intelligently is extremely difficult, if we only have two weeks from the time we get the real information. Is there any way that the hearing could be a little bit beyond that so that if we want to have our experts look at it, I'm sure from what Mr. Avery was saying, he would probably want that, too? Is there any way that the information can be made available either sooner than that to the community as well?
Well, if you're going to have representatives working on a committee--
Was that decided? I'm sorry, I didn't understand whether that would be true or not.
Are they?
If the community is going to be involved along the line--
That would just do--
That was a kind of toss-out. I wasn't sure that was happening. If the community is involved as it's developed, then that's one thing, but if the community is presented with it, and then the hearing that you want intelligent response to is only 10 or 12 days later, that doesn't give people a lot of time to get any kind of professional expertise involved on our behalf.
In fact, I was, it occurred to me, maybe we don't want this in conjunction with a regular meeting. Maybe we'd take so much of the meeting time, it needs to be a separate meeting.
Sure, we have to have a special meeting.
Maybe we'd have a special meeting a little bit later, maybe try to find a larger facility even.
Good idea.
Cooper High--
Obviously, those people outside don't know this is an empty auditorium.
Maybe staff could work out a date that's mutually convenient and find a facility, and we can notice that at the same time that we've noticed everything else in the scene.
Well, hey, you know, when we set special meetings, we really need to check with the council early on on that.
That's true.
The suggestion of making this a little later, October 3rd is our first regular council meeting. October 10th, if you're going to have it in a special place, we wouldn't be, having here at City Hall, we wouldn't be in conflict with the planning commission meeting, so possibly October 10th at one of the high schools or something like this might be--
Or the last week in September.
Or, yeah, well--
I think 20 days is an adequate time.
Last week in September, 26th.
If it's there by the 1st of September, and to have a special meeting in that last week, that would give over 20, that's three weeks, I don't think that would--
26th September, be, yes.
I will be gone, then.
Well, that's a good time.
You can't be gone.
You're going, you're going to do, you're going to do the report and leave town, all right?
We want to be sure we do this work.
Poor Travis. How long are you going to be gone?
A week, maybe a month.
Which days are you going to be gone, Bert?
That whole week.
Which days?
You will be back with--
Well, whatever, I don't have a calendar, whatever.
Last week of September?
Starting, 26th through the 30th.
Yeah, that's the last week of September.
Well, what about?
25th on--
What's, what's the Wednesday before that, the 20th or?
21st is the Wednesday before.
Tuesday night's the 20th.
Right.
I think we should shoot for the 20th.
September 20th.
Tuesday's 20th.
That would be approximately three weeks.
Can you make it on Tuesday, the 20th? Okay.
Tuesday's probably the better meeting night for Tuesday's probably the better meeting night for all of us.
Okay, Tuesday, the 20th?
And, I mean, September 1st would be the target date, but if you could have it done before that time, that'd be better for everyone concerned.
And the scene comes out usually a little in advance of the first of the month.
So it's then the, what date again was that, the?
20th?
Twice, Tuesday.
Tuesday, and staff will find us a place.
Yes.
Cupertino High School, or Montevideo High School, or something.
Larger auditorium, yeah.
Okay.
The Oddfellas Hall, or whatever.
And that specifically is a continuation of the access question at, uh-
Yes.
And there may be other issues that we don't resolve tonight, but that's at least one of the issues that'll be on that agenda.
Yeah, there could be more, we have-
Okay, that's, all right.
Yeah.
So it's Mary Avenue at least.
Well, it's-
The access, the whole thing.
The Stevens Creek access.
Remember, you're doing beyond just Mary and that, we're taking a look at impacts that, as we said, that diverted traffic, if you don't have access at all, where's it going to go?
Before people leave, probably a lot of them will, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate how you were very polite, even though you were very sincere and very caught up in how you felt, I'm sure. I know how that is, because I've been there, and I want to thank you for your participation, particularly for the gentleman who was so diligent to put up those maps as they kept falling down.
Brisonia.
Uh, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir. We don't have a lot of dialogue.
Could I, could I ask the staff also to study how the other interchange at, um, at Deansa Boulevard, or Sunnyvale-Saratoga, would affect the traffic that is presumably going into the Bub and Hill area? And what impact that would have on the flow of traffic from this particular interchange?
I don't know, I'm not sure I understand anything.
I, I, we don't have a map that's large enough on the wall here, but it seems to me that the distance from here to this other interchange is only several miles.
The traffic that would flow there and then back up into the neighborhoods.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, to, to make sure we understand what you want us to do, I just repeat, because I understand that we will look at the Mary Avenue aspect of it primarily from the standpoint of the design, plan view, design on the street, and in regards-
Circulation movement.
Circulation movement. Insofar as the, you also will continue to work with the authority to try to come up in Caltrans, try to come up with a solution within the existing right-of-way. And thirdly, we would look at a no-access, and what that, what that does to the street system from a traffic impact standpoint, and what might be done to mitigate that.
Yeah.
One other thing on that, on that Mary, that as the circulation access, but also addressing some of those questions that were raised, that some of the people raised here.
Kind of develop the issues.
Anticipating, yeah, the issues, yeah.
Yeah, and then I would also offer that those in the community that would wish to participate in looking at the geometrics and the, and the more technical aspects of these interchanges, if within the next 10 days you could leave your name with the city manager, I will personally see that we put up a little task force and pursue that.
When they, look, I can't get to my car easily.
Just keep-
When they look at the impact, like, if we don't have an exit on Mary, everybody's saying, there's going to be all these extra cars coming down Deansa and Foothill, but we have to remember that along with not having the exit on Mary, we're opening up 85, which all our-
We know that. We're aware of that.
Deansa's, the next day is going to be empty, right?
No. Wish it was.
Right.
The next day it'll be empty, the day after that it's going to be full, that's unfortunate.
They've heard there's an empty street.
No, it's- It'll be modeled with 85.
It's not, it's modeled with that.
Okay, well, that, before we get on to the, to the next issues we have, I think we'll take a 10-minute break, because there are a number of people that need to do so. Okay, now we're on to the issue at Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road interchange.
Says here to declare.
And we're on page six, is where we're-
We're on page six?
Yeah.
Very well, thank you.
And we have basically two options, unless we want to talk about another one, at that location, and this would be a part of the freeway agreement that would show on the agreement. Maybe just quickly touch the two again, Bert.
Okay, real quick, the two of them would be is to, you would defer approval on the freeway agreement by actually depicting a circle around that interchange, and waiting after the election, and make a determination as to what configuration you want to approve after that. And then the other one would be is declare the interchange configuration now, and say this is what you will approve, and actually show on the freeway agreement a diamond interchange to fit within the existing right-of-way, and not take any additional right-of-way, or move the interchange towards the city's residents. So what you'd really be saying is that you want to go along with the, with the planned configuration, and at this point, go on record as saying the diamond interchange would be your preference.
Could we say diamond interchange, because we only have the west half of the street?
That's right, you, you only designate the west half, and San Jose then can designate their half.
Anything they want.
Basically, yeah.
I would prefer to do it first, I think, because that way, uh, Saratoga knows what they're looking at, San Jose knows what they're looking at, and we're not behind the eight ball.
So I would be in, in favor of going with the, um, the diamond interchange.
Yeah, I think it's important that we show that's what we want, and we get it built right away.
All right, I'll go for that.
Five zip?
Yep.
That's good.
That was quick.
Okay, then we have the freeway agreement, performance agreement options, four options for the freeway agreement.
That's correct.
You want to outline those again?
Go through those real quick again, okay. Option one, of course, is to defer, and if you do it, you take a deferment, it doesn't mean that you defer until a certain time, you may just defer it at each meeting, and say, okay, next meeting comes along, you may change your decision from a deferment and go to one of these other options. But deferment says you'll defer signing any freeway agreement, performance agreement, until you know more facts, or you're assured of what the solutions are for the two issues. You resolved one of the issues tonight, which is the Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road, you only have one remaining issue now.
Well, can we sign a freeway agreement if we haven't decided on the other interchange?
That's, that's what I'm saying, is that-
And can we?
Or you could, you could take option number four, and say, now I'll sign the freeway agreement, and hopefully in good faith, we'll resolve this issue at access to Stevens Creek.
So would this, but would option one allow any work to be done?
No. Other than the Stevens Creek interchange, it's currently going to be constructed.
Would it allow the diamond interchange?
No.
Even if we said we were going for that, by a council vote?
You don't have an agreement under option one, without an agreement, you don't build.
Don't do anything.
Okay, just wanted to go.
Option two allows you to go ahead and approve all the interchanges, so the interchange could start.
Except we don't know.
Stevens Creek?
Except you don't know.
Stevens Creek?
Stevens Creek is underway.
Underway, so the only one left is?
You've got McClellan, you've got Stelling, and then, I guess the authority will decide whether they build the interchange at Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road, even though you've approved a diamond tonight, they may have to hold back because of San Jose approval on their half.
I think the, excuse me for a moment, the word problem is interchange. If you're talking about the structures, the bridge structures, because we're only proposing over crossings at McClellan and at Stelling, that might clear up some of the concern that I, I see up here. Interchange is only at Stevens Creek and at Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road, but if you refer to option two as construction of the structures only, that might be a more understandable way to-
That's probably better terminology.
It's not interchange, it's structures.
It's not the interchange, but it's a structure at that, at that intersection.
So it's not the ramps?
Right.
So you do the digging in the, in the, in the over or under whichever road goes?
Then it would seem like, uh-
We would still have a high degree, high comfort level with option two.
Two.
Terms of control.
That's right, you're going to lose a little bit of control, and you have to have some good feelings that you're going to resolve the issue.
We've got lots of good feelings up there.
Option three, just lose a little more leverage by saying you allow everything to occur with exception of a small section, to just protect yourself that the entire freeway isn't connected, so that the road, that the road could be utilized by vehicles. That, you pretty well have lost most of your control or leverage. And in option four, you've lost it all by approving it in its entirety.
Going back to two, then, oh, if we went with two, what we're allowing them to do is, what was the term you used, Will?
Build the structures.
Just the structures.
Structures.
The structures at-
It's a bridge.
At Stelling, uh-
McClellan.
McClellan, and Stevens Creek.
And, and the diamond-
Steven, you're already done, Stevens Creek.
Stevens Creek, okay, so Stelling, McClellan.
Yeah, but, you know, aren't you really, that's sort of, if you build a, the structure, you in fact built the freeway. I mean, you're not going to go ahead and build a structure, and then in six months say, oh, now we're not going to build a freeway.
That's, yeah.
If you're going to look at leverage-
Right.
You might as, you know, option two doesn't have any more leverage than, than option four, as far as I can see.
That's true.
My, my preference would be to go at option four, sign the agreement, let's get on with it. I mean, the problems we've got to resolve at, at Deansa Boulevard, not Deansa Boulevard, but at Stevens Creek, are going to get resolved regardless whichever of these options we do.
One way or the other, they have to.
And if you don't think so, Bob, you know, give us your input, but, uh-
I just think that holding back, you've got a situation where you've got a better, better pressure to, to really work towards a solution. I've still got a great deal of concern about that Stevens Creek-
Pressure with who?
The state, Caltrans, and with the authority both.
You do have some remaining things as far as money's concerned, as to cost, and if you sign the freeway agreement, or you're sure as to what your share is going to be, who's going to pay, some of these alternatives that we might come up may be very expensive. And signing the agreement right now without really knowing the bill or the option may be somewhat risky.
I could feel comfortable with two, still, I'll have one or two, I'm definitely opposed to four and three. I don't know how the others feel. Either, either way, one or two.
Well, if we approve two-
It'll give us some interesting public art.
Yeah.
And if we approve two, what, what is there to hold back on?
I think, I think the mayor mentioned two, three, and four, once you've signed that, you've in a sense given a signal that you're going to proceed ahead. But two gives you just a little more-
Two are the structures, right?
Two is just the structures.
You got my report. The advantage of two is, is that you do allow them to proceed with the structures, but you still have the control, because you haven't allowed the actual freeway or the roadway to go in, correct?
And we can still stop the roadway?
Now, that, what you're going to have there is you're going to have more of a pressure from, sure, you can stop the roadway, you haven't signed the agreement. Agreement's required, and you, if you haven't signed an agreement, you can stop the roadway. You'll have pressure from the public in this community to move ahead, but you also got pressure upon the state and, and the traffic authority. Not that, not that, I think the traffic authority has, you know, really worked hard at keeping this thing in, going as fast as they could, I have no quarrel with that. But we do have a problem still on this Stevens Creek intersection, and I think we've got to keep the pressure on to try to get a resolution, or work as hard as we can for that resolution.
There's nothing to say that we-
And I think if we give that, huh?
There's nothing to say, I mean, if we approved option two tonight, we could also be approving option four in 60 days.
That's correct, that's correct, it's very possible.
Well, I, my preference would be to go, if we're going to do that, take option one. I think, once you, once, you know, it's like-
Down the primrose path.
Yeah, I mean, you're-
Take your first step, you're on your road.
But now you're going from one extreme to the other, you're willing to completely approve, why, why not buy, why not, it seems like number two is a nice compromise, where you're buying some time, you're doing some work.
There's no in-between.
No, I, I, I think that's true, I don't think there is an in-between, because I think you, you make more of a mistake with two, because then you've got neither fish nor fowl. If you either, either you bite the bullet and sign the agreement, or you say, we're not going to sign the agreement until we got this thing resolved.
Feel comfortable about it.
But if you do two, you're starting down, you started down the slide, you can't really stop, even though you say you can.
I suspect in about a month to two months, we're going to know if we got an answer to this, within the right-of-way. And then at that point, you could go ahead and, and, you know, relook at the issue on, on two, three, or four.
If you selected one, you could always choose the others as rapidly as any others.
I'll go for one. I have no problem with two. No, I have no problem with two. I think one-
We certainly don't have a problem with one.
I think if we go with two, if we just put in the structures, there'll be so much pressure, even if we don't have everything we want, that we think we can get, there'll be so much pressure from the community, from everybody in the world, to push it on through, I think it'd be hard to withstand it, we'd say, well, you're not getting-
Well, I think we're also assuming, that assumes that, it sounds, it sounds like you're assuming that's going to be a year before you consider approving the agreement. I mean, hopefully, we'll be in a position to consider agreement in 60 days or 90 days.
So defer until then.
What does that do to the construction schedule?
Nothing.
You're just talking about a 60 to 90-day delay, it would have no impact on the construction schedule.
What kind of agreement would be the interchange agreement?
The interchange configuration would normally be reflected in the freeway agreement, would actually show a plan view, a little drawing.
No, option, option two, what kind of agreement?
I don't think, Mr. Mayor, you'd even sign an agreement in that sense, you'd basically be operating under the existing freeway agreement to give us permission to go forward with the structures work, much as you've done with Stevens Creek. You wouldn't actually sign a freeway agreement until the other issues were resolved, and no mainline construction would occur until that freeway was signed.
So that would be basically an addendum to the present agreement?
You'd basically be allowing us to proceed under the existing agreement, as much as you've done at Stevens Creek.
If, if you had authority right now to start work on the interchanges, how soon before physically you'd have concrete poured?
We're just going now to the final design on the remaining, remaining structures, we would not be able to get to construction until probably mid-1989.
Okay, so if we delay 60 days or 90 days, it doesn't make diddly?
No.
Other than, from my perspective personally, a perception, a message that might be delivered, I, I think this council is well on record in support of Route 85, I, I would just hope that your action would not be viewed by anyone else as negative towards moving to a compromise and a solution, and I don't, I don't expect it would, given your past-
Well, I think it's a logical argument that says that we have an intersection that is not defined at this point, and then, and we're working diligently to define that intersection, and as soon as we have that defined, we'll execute the agreement.
And if they don't believe you, send them to us, and we'll tell them.
I guess the question in my mind is if we've already said yes for Stevens Creek, talking about starting down a slide, we've already made that commitment, again, you're going to have a piece of public art there, too, if you don't build a freeway, so why not go ahead and continue on it with those structures on, on Stelling and McClellan?
That's the only thing we've been asked to do, and it was just one structure. So far, we haven't been asked to do any others.
See, I, I also get visions that if we don't get in there, and you don't start doing, somewhere along the line, someone says, hey, we don't have any money left for some of those along, you know, I just, that we're the last one to get to the trough, or whatever you want to call it, and I don't think it does any harm, we've already given the approval for the Stevens Creek structure, give approval for the other.
Okay, what is your construction plan as far as how you proceed from north to south, hopefully, in putting in the bridges and such?
We're proposing to do things in four basic segments, and we're looking to do the work between freeway to freeway, 280 to 17, not necessarily in that direction, we'll be doing structures work all along, and trying to complete that particular section at the same time.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow with it, in other words, you're not going to-
We're not, it's not a matter of just proceeding in one direction down the roadway, we are going to be doing, trying to break the construction into four major segments, and the piece that you're concerned about would be from 280 to 17. We will be doing most of the work simultaneously, that's what we're proposing, we have some schedule details to work out with Caltrans, but-
In other words?
What we would like to do is do all of those structures simultaneously, do the mainline freeway work pretty much simultaneously-
Oh, not just one at a time, they all?
Right.
Okay, so when do you propose to be doing McClellan and Stelling and such?
As I say, we're going, letting contracts or-
I lost it.
Going with the contracts for the final design this month and next month for the remaining structures on all of Route 85, for those structures, we'd be looking at mid-1989 before we'd be going to bid.
John, we wouldn't impair that at all, I mean, they're going to proceed with the-
Mr. Mayor, I have a suggestion, I haven't discussed this with your staff, and I just maybe make an offer-
It's fine, we don't discuss with them either.
That I think might, I, I understand where your staff is coming from in terms of the recommendation on, on option one, and given that we are talking about essentially resolving these issues, and I, clearly, everybody hopes that we'll be able to do that in a short timeframe, might I suggest that you go ahead and approve option one with a caveat that in the event we had a schedule problem, that we could come to the council, and you would individually consider requests from the authority in Caltrans.
Sure, that's fine.
Good.